Has a question or statement related to the budget. I do want to give you that opportunity. Okay, I don't hear anyone. So, could I get a motion to adjourn our budget hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So in that case now, we will return to our regular meeting. And if you're able to ask that you join me in saying the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic, for its fans, and to God, the miserable, the free, the righteous, and all.
Could I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Well, Dr. Harrison, we have one of our favorite parts of the year in which we get to recognize some great students.
Yeah, so again, I'd like to invite Mr. Cohen to come forward. And tonight, we're taking time to recognize our valedictorian and our salutatorian for all their great work over their academic careers. And we also are looking to acknowledge some of our science research students that may be off studying for some exams at this point. But right now, let's focus on our top student.
Excellent. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for letting me be here tonight. I know I say this every year, but it's truly one of my favorite nights of the year. Anytime that we get a chance to recognize our students is certainly a spectacular night. But when we get a chance to recognize the valedictorian and the salutatorian for the year, it truly is something magical and truly wonderful. So, the first student that I'd like to talk about is our salutatorian. She has had just a simply brilliant and amazing high school career. I've had a chance to speak with some of her teachers and had a chance to go through transcripts recently. One of the things that I can tell you about this young lady is that she is truly one of the hardest workers that I've ever seen in a high school. She is brilliant in the math and the science fields, but is obviously so strong and incredible overall. I think back to certain opportunities that we've opened up at the high school. She's a student that came front and center in some of her earlier years when we offered opportunities for students to get involved in programs at White Plains Hospital. And as I said to you, I know that when her teachers speak of her, they speak of a student that is tireless in her work effort, is brilliant in her thinking, and is so remarkable and so well-deserving of this tremendous honor. I know that I'm personally looking forward to hearing her speak at graduation. And a couple of things. One of the things, I was very excited to be able to give four students in our school today scholarships that came through from the New York State Education Department, and she was one of them. And it was a nice moment in my office today when we had a chance to talk about it. And I know that it's going to be well-received and well-used. And one of the things that I always like to read is that she has worked so hard throughout her high school career that right now, she is currently running an overall GPA of a 4.48. Keep in mind that technically, the highest grade point that we have is a 4.33. So that starts to speak to the number of AP and honors classes that she has taken throughout high school, and to the degree that she is able to perform at some of our very highest of levels. So it is truly a great honor and a privilege for me to introduce this year's salutatorian, Ayushi Ja.
Good job. Come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job on your dedication. Here you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great thing.
Thank you.
So now I have the wonderful privilege to introduce you to our valedictorian for the year. Someone who has shined equally as bright throughout our school and throughout his high school career, and also someone who has just demonstrated such brilliance and such deep insight. He has served as a tremendous leader in the school. I think of two areas where he has truly enhanced and helped grow our school community. One is that, along with some of his peers, as a sophomore, I believe, he developed our high school midnight run club, which is now truly bright and vibrant and has been making multiple amazing runs throughout the year. And it's not just the creation of the club that speaks to his amazing dedication and commitment and thoughtfulness for others, but it's the maturity with which he and his colleagues have created websites and signup sheets, and the ability for people in the community to be able to donate everything from clothing to food to other types of resources. That's truly making an impact for people that are homeless in New York City, and it is something that's warmed my heart. If you want to see his real brilliance, all you need to do is spend some time in his Latin class. I've had the pleasure of doing that this year. And the things that he talks about, the ideas that he comes up with, his ability to recite and interpret real Latin, as I use the term from our teachers. Just to give context, in our first few years of Latin, there's sort of a modified version of Latin. And then once our students really get into Latin III and above, we really take the training wheels off of them. And he is exquisite in his ability to utilize the language. I am pleased and honored to be able to share that his grade point average to date is a 4.52, so similar to what I said before. When you think that your technical highest grade point is a 4.33, the amount of grades that you have at the highest level and the amount of honors classes that, an AP, that you would need to be able to get yourself to that level is incredible. And it is with great honor and privilege that I introduce you to Brayden DeNoy and this year's valedictorian.
Congratulations.
Really remarkable. Here you go.
That's amazing.
So I also have the honor of being able to introduce you and to announce some of our great work in our science research program. We had a number of students take home some really tremendous awards and honors this year. From the looks of the audience, I would imagine that many of our students are probably home studying for AP exams, potential senior finals, and some of them may be upstairs in the high school right now in an annual late-night session for AP US History exam. But certainly want to make sure that we're recognizing each and every one of them. So let me start with someone who's here and someone who we've already met. So this year, she had the ability to place third at the category of environmental science at the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and she was a fifth-place finisher in the category of environmental science at the Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. Once again, Ayushi Ja. Come on up.
Get comfortable coming up here, huh? Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good things and all of a sudden, congratulations. So the next student that I want to introduce is not here, but she has a representative with us. And some really great awards that she's bringing in. I'm actually going to read from the bottom of the list and then upwards. She was a first-place finisher in the category of medicine and health at the Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. Then she was a second-place finisher in the category of medicine and health at the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair. And then most recently, she was an incredibly prestigious grand prize winner, and she will be traveling upstate to be able to compete in the International Genius Olympiad. And it's our pleasure to recognize Elizabeth Lee. So I think Elizabeth's mom is here, and we're going to bring Catherine up to accept it for her.
Pass her. Congratulations, all.
So well done, Catherine.
So I'm going to read through our list, if it's okay with you, for the rest of our recent science award winners. I'm going to do it alphabetically. The next student was a third-place finisher at the category of physical science at the Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, and that was Julia Cauterpoli. So if we could just put our hands together for her. Our next student was a semifinalist at the Regeneron Science Talent Search, and I know that we've done some press releases on that. And even just last week, I had the privilege of being over at the county executive's office, and they had a wonderful celebration for everyone throughout Westchester County who had earned the same accolades. And that goes to Jacob Dinevsky. Similarly, we had another student who was a semifinalist in the Regeneron Science Talent Search, and she also was a Stockholm Junior Water Prize winner at the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and that went to Annie Horowitz. We had a student that was a fifth-place finisher in the category of computer science and math at the Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, and that went to Rishi Madabushi. We had a student who received the Critical Behavioral Science Achievement Award at the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and that went to David Markowitz. Two more students, so don't put your hands away. We have a student who had two awards. Third-place finish at the category of medical science at the Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, as well as third-place in the category of medicine and health at the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and that goes to Hannah Monak. And a third-place finish in the category of physical science at the Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium went to Chris Minoang. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cohen, here's certificates, if you could please pass them along to our students.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations to all of our students that were present this evening. Of course, those that couldn't be with us. Certainly, credit due to all of our students, their families, who I'm sure are so supportive, and all the teachers that have encouraged them along the way. And of course, with respect to the science research program, our outstanding science department that works tirelessly to support our students' work on that front as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Should we swap and do our presentation first?
Yeah.
Yes? All right, so we'll do that. So typically, we would be doing some committee, board committee and liaison reports. Tonight, we have a presentation. Oh, actually, first, we have comments from members of the community. So this is an opportunity, if you have a comment or statement. And then following that, we'll have a presentation, the student performance report. Thank you for those who are joining us early. And if you have any questions or comments, it's an opportunity to go to the microphone and share a thought or question. Okay. While we wait for the set of performance, I just want to note that it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we dearly appreciate our faculty for the amazing job they do in instructing our students and supporting their well-being and their collaboration together in terms of continuing to advance the work of our schools. So thank you, faculty. The board really appreciates your work.
So that said, as we kind of set the stage for last week, that tonight will be the annual student performance report. It is a comprehensive overview of a number of different data points that relate to our students' work over recent years. So we certainly highlight students' achievement on standardized tests that we're familiar with across from New York State, but we also take a window into SATs and ACT scores as well. So it's a lengthy presentation. So Dr. Core, at times, will stop and dig in a little deeper on some particular slides, and others will move through, recognizing there'll be opportunity for discussion and question now and future. So that's it. Dr. Core, propose a question.
Sure. So I think tonight's presentation, we've tried to add a little bit more data. So I think that there has been some interest in seeing different kinds of data and as well as some examples of evidence, maybe evidence of growth or just evidence of change over time. So as Dr. Harrison said, you know, some of these slides, we show them every year, they're just a window in to how our students perform. Not, we like to look at ourselves, but I think there's always interest in seeing how we perform in comparison to other districts. So you'll see there's a series of slides that were not. Okay, here we go. So we use standardized tests as well as other formative and summative assessment to assess our students and their progress. The student performance report looks primarily at standardized assessment. So tonight, we'll show you the scores of ELA, mathematics, science, region scores, AP scores, SAT, ACT, and we're going to give you some examples of what do we do with that data when we get that in some cases. So we would like to believe that we are assessing our students pretty much every day in one way or another. But capturing formative assessment is much trickier than capturing standardized assessment. So as we go through this data tonight, I also would ask you to keep in mind that this is really just a snapshot in time. It's two days. As we know, we, in some cases, we have students who opt out of some of our exams, so it's not representative necessarily of all of our students. But it does give us a window in. So just a couple of key points, and I'm not big on reading, but it's maybe worth just highlighting. Ninety-five percent of 2018 class received region diplomas, as you'll see, we'll share a chart with that. That's pretty typical of Irvington. So the other thing that you notice very often in our performance report is it's kind of static from one year to the next. There's not always a huge change. So sometimes we like to look for the nuances. ACT score 29% higher than the national average, and we'll share some of the detail behind that. Nineteen AP class offerings. So again, we're trying to give you a window in, but not necessarily does this give you a view of every single student or every student's experience. So each year, we add on, I think we must take a wave at the top somewhere. I don't know how we keep fitting all of this on here. I think we just make the font smaller on the left there, it looks like. But we always like to add, we are really proud of our scholar athletes and our teams. We have an amazing group of students, year after year after year, who commit themselves to their academics, and while at the same time, commit themselves to our athletics program. And so this is always, it's always nice to be able to share the shout-out around our students and the level of work and commitment they have in both of those key areas. We use data as just one tool, and as we've gone through, we've continued to build our data set. So I know our building administrators have shared the use of other kinds of data and more importantly, the correlation of data, trying to look and see what one data point means in the context of possibly some other aspects of student learning. So we do continue to increase our use of data and examining our data. Our professional learning at almost all levels includes some conversations and dialogue around data and how we can look at that data and how it can inform our thinking. So as you can see here, here's just a quick chart of our region scores and our percentage passing. Again, you can see across the board, in Irvington, we are pretty successful in our passing rate of regions. And as you can also see, we have not yet made it to the, just the five mandated. We still seem to have more regions up there. So I would say that is still a work in progress. Also, just worth noting, and you'll see it later on, but for the math standardized test, our IMS scores, so I think everybody knows it, but I'll just clarify. Our students who are advanced in math in eighth grade take the regions. They don't take the eighth-grade math assessment. For many years, they took both, but no longer is that the case. And our students who are in science take the science regions. One of the uses of our data, and again, I would say more our ongoing collection of data, such as FMP, Ames Web, math module data, different assessments at the middle school and the high school, but I would say mostly K8, our interventionists are using that data to target instruction. So what we're looking to see is we're looking to see our students ultimately need interventions for a shorter period of time and for a shorter period of time, maybe within a year and over the year. So for instance, we now can look at students who received a short intervention, maybe a six-week intervention in reading in first grade, and are now reading on grade level in third grade. So that's what we're always looking for. We're looking to see, how does our data, what, how are we sustaining our work? Because that's the other piece. If we have a student who is receiving an intervention every year and never moves to another level, then we need to examine that more closely. So some of our work around using our data sets has been to target our interventions and then assess the length and the duration of our assessment, of our interventions. So here's always these quick views or charts that show just an overall of how our students scored on the 2018 ELA test. I always feel compelled to share that New York State continues to shift and move. One of the things we'll talk about a little later is that in any given year, they assess standards at different levels. They could have five questions related to one standard in one year, and then the next year only have two questions related to that standard on the assessment. So when you're looking from year to year, it's not always apples to oranges, but it gives you a kind of a quick overview of where we are and how we did. 2018 math. So that, what I shared with you a couple of minutes ago, so if you look across third through seven, you can see sort of more consistent numbers in there, but when you look at eighth grade, you see a difference. So that, again, at the eighth grade, we have a portion of our students who do not take this assessment, they take the regions instead. So here are comparisons, and, you know, I saw like a very long list of some questions that were posed. I'm not sure by whom, so obviously, I didn't get to those questions today. But I will say that I did notice that somebody questioned about our cohort and a shift in our cohort over time. Oh, thank you, Deb. So if you're looking at prior, then, right, you will see there is a shift. Mamaroneck is an addition that did not always exist in our cohort, and Croton-Hormon did not always exist in our cohort.
The question I had was, I noticed that in 2016, those two were not part of the cohort, but we did have Scarsdale, Bronxville, Byron, Hills, and Chappaqua. Why did we take them out? Why are we no longer part of that cohort?
So that cohort was selected and by us. In other words, we looked at demographics, we looked at population, numbers of students is a pretty clear alignment for us. And somewhere along the way, when we were doing comparisons to ourselves for other purposes, not the student performance report, we actually shifted and added in Mamaroneck and Croton and removed Scarsdale and Chappaqua specifically because we don't really compare to those communities in terms of size. And so it felt like not necessarily a fair comparison to have those districts.
It felt like Bronxville, for example, because I thought that we do compare our size either socioeconomically or in size that they would be. I mean, in other words, how are you picking the cohorts? Because there clearly is a, there was a shift from 2016 to 2017 and 2018, and I'm questioning why we're not looking at those schools.
Yeah. The shift, when we made that shift, it was really based upon looking at a number of different indicators and trying to find districts that were more similar in lots of ways, and understanding that Mamaroneck is certainly bigger than us. But it looked at different socioeconomic factors, in some cases, enrollment factors, free and reduced lunch rate, staff size in some cases, so there was...
Combined wealth ratio.
What's that?
Combined wealth.
Combined wealth ratio. So we looked for a cluster of districts that felt into similar categories than we were before. That was the shift that was made at that point in time, and as Dr. Core indicated, that it was a cohort that was being utilized for other purposes. So the thought was that you'd carry that forward for this.
Could I make an observation? That for anyone who isn't familiar with combined wealth ratio, that's essentially talking about how much state, that ultimately tracks with how much state money we get. So in terms of struggling under the same, with the same challenges, in terms of having to fund anything that we want to do practically through taxpayer funds, they are in the same boat. So from that standpoint, I can see why you try and look at communities, frankly, that are similarly disadvantaged.
Okay, so again, the comparison in math. So you can see, the way, if you can pick Irvington out, it's the bar that has the little number on it. That's how you know that that's us. And in this case, it's, so it's by grade, so you can see where we, how we compare to our neighboring school districts in each of those areas.
Fifth and sixth. Are we able to jump in with questions?
Sure.
So was there a reason that we decided to go to alphabetical as opposed to kind of ranking this year?
No, I think it was how it was pulled from particular data sources and how that the, you mean ranking from left to right, going alpha as opposed to, say, the level of proficiency?
Well, it seems that it's at least possible to kind of see any kind of pattern or trend. It's not possible to see it in the numbers when they're alphabetical versus when they're ranked. At least if you're ranking by like the top, the top two tiers of performance, you got, which is how it was done in 2016, it was, you can see something.
And in 2017. I mean, clearly, what we're doing is going back and forth, because even though it's not in the presentation, we're going back and looking at 2016 and 2017 and comparing them side by side. So if it's not in the same order, it makes it more challenging at a minimum.
So no, I think no reason, I think change design, honestly. I think we use, because we also weren't always using this kind of a bar chart, this bar representation either. So, I mean, certainly for moving forward, your feedback has helped, right? Like, I mean, we could certainly go back and look, and maybe we want to decide.
Nothing deliberate, honestly, it was a different data set that we were pulling from that made the development of the charts just more simplistic on our end.
I have a couple of questions. Shall we, I'll wait till you're done with the three through eight.
Okay. So, okay, so we're just keeping going. So grade five, you can see how we performed against our peers, grade six, grade seven, and ultimately, grade eight. And I think, yeah. Dave, do you want me to stop there, or do you want me to go through ELA, too?
Whatever you feel, I'm good, I can wait until after.
Okay. So if we shift and we look at our ELA, grades three through eight, you know, again, when we look at these bar charts, one of the things, whether we're comparing directly from one school district to another school district, is actually for us sometimes less important than trying to see the patterns, right? So when we look at this, and this is one of the reasons why this representation actually is helpful, it tells us, are we an outlier, right? Or are we fitting in somewhere within that range? Because the other thing that's similar to most of the school districts we compare to is they're all small like us. And a subset of students can make a difference in the way that we perform in a given year, which is why I also highlight for you our families that opt out. You know, our opting out doesn't really help us to be able to look across. So these are scores across a grade level, and again, we're shooting for similar numbers, but in any given year, that cohort can be represented in different ways that may or may not be similar. So when we look across at these particular charts, we are looking to see where we fit within a range. And did we perform at a level that feels similar? Because again, different years, the tests are developed differently. So in some years, you can see there's some consistency in the way the school districts perform. That's a reflection of the test generally, not a reflection of the curriculum, especially if it's vastly different from the year before. Because if our students performed fairly well, let's say, as fourth graders, and now all of a sudden, they don't perform well as fifth graders, something usually, that's usually test-driven. So again, we check ourselves against... usually is, that's usually test-driven. So again, we, we check ourselves against, against that by looking across the cohort. And the region in general, by the way, usually. So again, you can look, you can see, you can see where our numbers fall, where our students fell in that particular cohort. That's our seventh and our eighth. We generally perform fair, our fourth grade science test is generally, as you can see, a pretty high-scoring test for us. I think that's true probably around the region. Just as a reminder, next year is the last year for the fourth grade science test. There will be a one-year hiatus, and the following year, we will implement the assessment for the new standards, and that will be now given in eighth, in fifth grade. So fourth grade will no longer be an assessment year for science. And just as a sidebar, that's impacting our implementation of our new science curriculum in that our fourth grade teachers still need to be able to prepare our incoming fourth graders next year for the science test, even though we are also rolling out the new standard simultaneously. Oh, that one didn't work so well. Okay. So, so you can see mean score average, and this just runs through those districts and gives you those numbers and just by looking, you know, at a different, through a different lens. What's that? I don't, yeah, I don't know why it came that way.
Just for consistency, on, I noticed on this chart, you didn't put the numbers in for the tests, for the science, like how many in each one?
Oh.
And you did in the other ones, and it's just helpful when you're looking, like, that's how I could find Irvington real quick?
We can have them put in.
So just, yeah.
Yeah, for me too. It's hard for me to find Irvington. Yeah, absolutely.
Because this year, you did alphabetically left to right, and the previous years, it was alphabetical right to left. So it's like, you can flip it. I mean, that's why these charts, the bars are very good, because you can easily flip them.
Yeah, exactly. No problem. Okay, so.
Do you have any questions now?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know, this is a passion of mine, you know. So I took a dig, dug deeper into some of the numbers, and I, I looked at, I went back, I specifically looked at the third grade because I was really curious about, you know, there's a lot of work been done around RTI there, and intervention work with kids, and so I was just curious to see how it reflected in the data on the state exams. And I noticed in 14, 15, only 52% of third graders were proficient, and 15, 16, 52%, 16, 17, 67%, 17, 18, 73%. Right? So we've seen some, some nice growth in that specific grade band. I, I'd be hopeful at some point between now and June, if we could potentially look at, you know, as much time, look at some of the Ames Web data that supports that growth, right, and sort of understand what's working for kids, so families can support that kind of work at home, and, you know, and you started to dive in, and this is not the meeting for that, and we've talked about that, but the RTI work on the 27, 28% of kids that are still struggling. So, yeah. I was just gonna, my other question is, is can sometime between now and June, could we somehow get a, a report or something that looks at the, you know, how that growth is happening, so that we could sort of substantiate some of the things that we address come budget time, right, asks and so forth? That would go a long way. I'm just putting that out there. My second, you want to follow?
Can I jump on you?
Dave just said is what I was wondering. When I looked at 2016, when we got the report, let's just say for English Language Art Scores for grades three through eight, we had received how many students were tested, and then what percentage of those students were proficient. So for example, in 2016, for the ELA, we were told that 685 kids were tested and 71% of those were proficient. I'm curious, is that information in this report, and if not, why? Is it just because we didn't ask, and therefore, or is that not something that no longer we look at data that way?
We just did it that way for years. I, I don't, I wish I could give you a reasonable answer to that.
But I'm, what I'm wondering is, it was given to the board in 2016. So does that information, knowing proficiency, right, I mean, that we had a certain number of students, and we have a number, 71%, to me, as a board member, that's easier to, to absorb and understand. And when I'm looking at, for example, the information in front of me, I don't know if I could gather that. Can you gather that, the proficiency? I mean, is this for a living?
No, I didn't, I dug deeper into it.
Is that something we should be able to walk away knowing, or is that, is that data that, that you're using, or that the teachers are using?
Yeah. I was gonna say, I mean, I think that's the data that we use. You know, we, we look at our data in, in multiple ways, but one way is to look at individual students, right? So we look at their individual score reports, and we figure out who need, you know, especially, again, related to RTI, who needs support. I think you know, as we, we are no longer, we used to be required to use those proficiency numbers for, to give AIS, RTI. We were required to do it. Now, we are forbidden from doing that. You are not allowed to use the state scores to determine academic intervention. You must triangulate your data. So I, I, I think there's like, in a way, there's like sort of a mixed piece, right? So we use it because we want to make sure we're catching kids along.
The question is, I'd like to see the triangulated piece.
Right, well, that's the RTI data. That's Ames Web, that's, right.
I'm saying it would be nice between now and June, not tomorrow or whatever, but at some point to see, like, like, I'm looking at growth in third grade across three consecutive years. That's a celebratory piece, right? It, it, when, when, when folks from the elementary schools come in and make asks for different things, in my estimation, it's, it's beneficial to them to say, "Look, the data shows that by using this, so it would be nice for the board to see that kind of stuff." That's just the, the first ask. I'm gonna sum up the rest of my ask in one nicely worded question. So you said at the beginning that capturing formative assessment data is complicated. I've been on the board for 15, 16, and 16, 17, 18?
Third year.
That's the third year that's been said. We have a goal, where's the goal? I wrote it down. I wrote it down. Where's the goal?
Develop balanced assessment?
Yeah, thank you. It's objective B and C to develop balanced, here it is. So anyway, we, we understand that it takes time, right, to develop these kinds of systems, where we use our own internal data and our own internal measurements, and we're sort of inching there and getting there and so on. We, I don't know if we've gone from the toe to the knee, or to the elbow, or wherever we might be, but do we expect to see progress from year to year in this? Because to date, I, I'd like, how, when are we gonna see progress in, in that, so that we don't hear capturing formative assessment data is complicated? Again, because formative assessment data, you started the presentation by saying, you know, this is, and we're gonna spend a lot of time now looking at stuff that the first slide says here, the, they have limits, we use multiple means. So I, I'd like, are we gonna make progress in that area at some point?
So tonight is the standardized student performance report. So that's what tonight's presentation is.
That doesn't answer my question.
I, I think, Dave, yes, it is an area that, that we're making progress. I think it's getting clarity and alignment around really what the question is that's being asked, and how the board wants to see the results. So is that looking at specifically how formative assessment's being used, you know, where it's being used? So if we're thinking about creating a balanced assessment system, where are we in the process of aligning our assessments is, is one area to explore. And then the other area that I, I could potentially look into your question is, how do you, how are we linking formative assessment to other outcomes potentially? Is it another area that I can see? So I think it's getting clarity around what the ask is and what the, the realistic answers. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I've been asking for three years.
I do know that we have, I do know that we have end-of-year presentations, K five and six through 12. I do know that some of the data that, that you're talking about is, is, I don't know to what degree, but will be a part of those presentations. And so I, I think certainly we have upcoming curriculum meetings, and maybe an opportunity to, to talk about it as well.
Yeah, I just, to the clarity piece though, I, I've been asking the same exact question for three years. So I, I, you know, maybe I've been asking it unclearly for three years, but I, you know, I'm just, as a board member, I look at this strategic plan, and I look at focus number two, I look at A, at B, and I look at C. And I would love to, you know, get a, at the end of the year, if we revisit this, I would love to have a, you know, a progress update on those two things. Because that's what we try to fund every year, moving towards that. So we just approved a budget that moves, so it shouldn't be that hard to do that. So I would love at the end of the year to sort of have some things speaking to those specific goals, which I know that as a board, we've sort of been engaged in talking about.
And I think you and I and other trustees, and certainly administrators have the opportunity to see a lot of this test data, which is fairly easily available online at, at the State Education Department website. So, you know, trustees, we're looking to see how you're using this information, the other information that David's referencing, other assessment data that you're developing, to see how that's driving, you know, your, your ability to improve instruction, because that's what we want to support. And that's the, the perennial, how do we know question.
I mean, only because I, like, I look at this, right, and I see, kind of, what you were asking, right? So Irvington on the right, fourth grade ELA, 17% of kids are level four. Now we've included Mamaroneck in that group, like, I, I don't know, it's a student performance report, great, fact, got it. But I want to know, like, why does Mamaroneck have, and Hastings have more level fours? Like, what's going on there? You know, that's to me, student performance, like, understanding how our kids are...
I don't know that I want to know, I mean, if it's consistently, and we can point to something, maybe, but I, I think I'm more interested in knowing what's happening here within our own district. And this is, as you've referenced, just tells us, oh, we're with, the barometer is, we're in the ballpark of these other districts or not. And if not, you would wonder why. But.
I just hope you're data nerd, yeah.
No, but I, but I look at a bunch of Dave's questions, I think there is something there. If you, if you look at the third through fourth, where the third grade scores seem to be...
In ELA, he's speaking about.
In ELA, relatively similar across our cohorts. And then we get to fourth grade, where they now seem to diverge. And the question is, why? And is it, is it that there was a particular area that the test measured between third and fourth grade that, that we didn't do as well on? Or what, I think that's the type of, you know, analysis that I think Dave was, was asking about, which I think would be of interest to the board to understand where there are those divergences, and is it something that we're able to identify why? And if we are able to identify why, what resources should we look to try to commit to address that issue?
But I'd like to harken back to a presentation we did specifically on how our kids did on a specific set of third grade, we didn't do well on, and that ended up informing an entire coaching procedure. So I feel like we don't get that information. So perhaps we want it in the report, but we've had that at other reports during the year.
The whole back end of this, as examples of that.
Yeah, I think that the latter part of the present, presentation gets on that, where it may not be put in a number of percentage with it, it's taking that connection. So here's the data that we're talking about now, here's what we're doing with it. Dave, what I think you're talking about is finding that, that third leg of the triangle, the third grade triangle. So we're gonna get, I think, that other piece of it coming forward.
Can I ask a question? The eighth grade math, how long has, have our students only, the kids taking the regions in eighth are no longer taking the math assessment? When did that change?
I would say it's five years, maybe. It's four or five years.
Oh, it has been that long?
Yeah. New York State didn't allow us to do that. They insisted that all eighth graders take the math assessment. And somewhere along the way, when there was that outcry of testing and too much testing, they reversed that, and they didn't, they no longer require it.
And just a, a point of information, under the new authorization of ESSA, to be able to hit standards as needed, there may be a need to go back to double testing kids is one of the critiques of that in areas such as this.
And just to pick up on what, for a second, do we know amongst our cohorts for the eighth grades, if those kids who take the regions also take the test or not?
Um, I couldn't tell you definitively. I am fairly sure that they don't, but I would, but I'd have to like survey all the neighboring districts.
Because it looks like if you look at the eighth grade, there's a very wide variation. But David, I'm wondering if that may be one of the reasons why there is that type of variation?
Yes, but you know, some schools also do either Algebra for All for eighth grade, or don't advance in eighth grade. You know, so there's like a few different approaches that schools take.
I'm, just, I don't want to let your question drop off either. I mean, is there a way in which we could get feedback, or take a look at that, you know, why, and was the difference for that third or fourth grade?
Well, I just want to be, wait, wait, let me, it was the...
So your previous question was pointed out there, in fourth grade ELA.
Right, but that wouldn't be a issue of who's taking the test, and is that a...
I'm just going back to your previous question.
Yeah, which I think we may hear about at the end of the presentation.
You're not hearing about ELA, no, we're gonna share an example, a math example.
Okay.
ELA from the middle school.
Yeah, because I didn't see if there's the flag.
No.
Okay, I didn't miss it, okay.
So, I guess this is more, okay, I'll let you continue with your presentation.
Sure.
Yep, yep, yep. Because you might answer it actually.
Okay. So regions exams? So I think that our regions exams, as you can see, again, we have not moved yet, but this whole idea, this just lays out for you the requirements. I'll leave it there for a second, just to make sure everybody... On the same page? Okay. So again, regional diplomas, we'd just like to give you the history. So these are our, the score distribution. You can see, this is all the regions, and then we'll go through piece by piece. You'll notice that where it lists Common Core rates, so that's how you know it's the new, the new assessment, not the old assessment, even though I think Common Core is gone now, and everything's Next Gen, but we won't change that yet. Again, across, so you can see where we fall amongst our... I'll go through, and then I'll stop, and if you have questions about regions. No.
Yeah, one question, just in terms of the breaks in the data. And we have one group which is eight, five, 400, a very small band of 80 to 84% after that. Is there a reason why the data breaks that way? Is that how everyone measures it, or just how we're looking at it?
No.
So if you wanted to go like the...
You're saying the, the breaks at the bottom there?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the breaks, those are the breaks that we get.
Okay.
That we're given.
Okay. Oh, you mean how they, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Just seems like a very weird way to look at the data, that's why I ask.
Yeah.
So, just thinking back to various presentations over the past years, I feel like it's very clearly been demonstrated to me, I'll speak to me, as, as a board member, how you use data, and you referenced it earlier about the lower grades, how it's a piece, Ames Web, and, and, you know, whether it's changing the curriculum or need of an academic intervention. What I constantly struggle with is how this happens at the secondary level. And specifically, I've noticed like a similar trend with, for example, Algebra II, Core Algebra, Common Core Test, 2018, 2017, you know, comparing the scores. Like, can you speak to, again, I'm making an assumption here, that you take this data, and, I mean, because I do think like earlier, the ELA was a perfect example, how all the cohorts looked exactly the same. So like you said, you know, sometimes that's the test. But if you're seeing kind of like the same kind of results, and comparing ourselves to cohorts, so two years in a row, what do you do with that data? Are you changing the curriculum? Like, what goes on? Because I feel like that's the one piece I never really kind of... Because I feel like that's the one piece I never really kind of had a handle on.
So, I mean, I could speak to the high school level. We're not necessarily using comparative data to other schools. We're really looking at-
I'm comparing Irvington from year to year. I agree with you. And by the way, I look at this as a piece of our story.
Sure.
It's not the be all, end all. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
So, I'm just comparing Irvington to Irvington here, I'm not talking about the other cohorts.
One of the things that we get at the end of the year after we scan our region, or anytime we administer Regents is we get a item analysis. So, in the department, the teachers will be able to use that data to see if there's certain questions in their curriculum that they're having high scores, low scores. I mean, you bring up math, some of the challenge in Algebra II, so we've only had the Common Core version of the test now for a couple of years, and some of the challenge lies in how the curriculum has been sort of weighted in the past versus current. So, for instance, I know that our Algebra II teachers were incredibly surprised at the amount of statistical questions that were put into the first year's exam. And in, they were told, and really it was hammered home, that statistics were going to be a much bigger part of the exam. And then it wound up being, I think, one or two questions on the entire exam. But the problem is that-
Can you just clarify, they were given that information when?
So, part of that is through, through the work that was posted on the State Ed website and-
Beginning of the year when-
Review packets for multiple years in preparation to the transition to that. But the problem is that, you know, we're still kind of new in that process, so they haven't been able to use that data in any one given year to start making major shifts in curriculum. I would say our Algebra I curriculum is an area that we've had now far more years, two more years than Algebra II, to be able to see our trends and to see how we prepare for that. Anyway, I'm digging into one example. I mean, in general, every one of our Regents courses, the teachers are able to get those item analysis and be able to use that to see how they want to create emphasis in their curriculum in the following year.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to keep going, we can always come back. So, I, we tried to put some additional information in this year that hopefully will be, will be helpful to understanding or at least giving you a window into the overall AP courses. So, as always, we'd like to just continue that history of AP courses. And we continue to look at those and grow those and ensure that we have opportunities for our students. Keep in mind, when we talk about the test, right, you can count the same student, right, multiple times, right? Because you can have one student who takes multiple AP tests, so the numbers sometimes might seem a little bit off. Um, sorry, just put that, I can't see it up there. Okay. So, this is, just gives you kind of this, a big picture. I'm going to go and break it down into each individual AP and then if we wanted to come back. So, what we wanted to show you was the, actually, the number of students each year. And as you can see, sometimes there's consistency in our numbers and sometimes the numbers can range. We also tried to show you, give you the visual of the line chart, but also national passing and where we fell below national passing. So, you know, for me, and you know, I think Dave, you know, would agree with this, we've had this conversation, you know, this should be informative data, right? Like, we should be looking across in the same way that we showed you a series of bar charts to say, how are we doing amongst our peers? That's the value in this. It says, well, wait a minute, if the rest of the world is doing this, or the rest of the AP world of this course is doing this, then why aren't we doing that? So, by showing this data, really what it does is it raises questions, right? And it raises questions for our teachers to say, why or why not? Again, I'm, one of the things that we pride ourselves on in Irvington is open enrollment in AP courses. And when you have open enrollment, that opens the door to not necessarily always have reflective scores that might be the same of a school district that is selective in who can or cannot take AP courses. So-
Can we talk about that?
Sure.
We've said that, you know, for quite a few years and I certainly understand it and I certainly support it at the moment. The thing, when I look at these scores and being a parent of high schoolers, I think, honestly, I think my kids have taken every single one of the APs offered, so thank you for all the courses that are here. The thing that strikes me though, and I look back twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, is that when you, when you look at the twenty-one courses, right, of the APs and you take away the courses that are offered every other year, and you take away the ones like Japanese that we offer, but we really don't have instruction, there's about seventeen classes. And then if you take away the classes that have less than ten kids, literally, we have a few that have four kids, five kids, right? We're left with eleven core AP classes that are really the same classes that we've been offering since the beginning of time that we've offered APs. And when you talk about open enrollment, what really strikes me is that when I look at, you know, just my view of the data, it shows me that for English Language AP and for our APUSH, our numbers are going up significantly. So, open enrollment to me, when I look at that, I see a hundred and four kids now taking English Language, which is awesome. And APUSH, we've got ninety-five kids. So, I understand that open enrollment is something that's a benefit in this district and it allows our kids to take APs where in other maybe school districts we couldn't. The thing though that I don't get with open enrollment is if you look over the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen years, the rest of our AP core classes, we really have thirty kids in there. I mean, and on average, twenty-two, forty-two, thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty. So, I don't get the emphasis on open enrollment being a reason why our, our scores are not necessarily national passing rates because we have so many kids who are taking them that wouldn't otherwise. The vast majority of our AP courses, we've got about thirty kids in the class. So, it's not, because when I first heard you say that three years ago, I was thinking, oh, that's because we have so many kids and therefore there's such a variety and, you know, there's such a different-
Right.
-composition of the classroom. But in reality, since you go back and back and back, the class size really doesn't change that much over the last five years. It's always about thirty, with the exception of a few classes. And the ones that are growing is fantastic.
Right.
And I've noticed that AP Bio, we doubled the number of kids, and I'm sure it's tied to science research, so when I see that, I'm really excited.
Yeah.
So, I just don't get the significance of open enrollment in our scores.
I just like to say, you know, and I know that you know that, but I'm not sure, I say it because I'm not sure everybody always knows that we, that we don't have a selective process. I don't say it as a, as a defense of whether we're aligned with national passing, I really don't.
That's the way I treat it.
No, I'm sorry, I don't. It's just my moment in time where I like to just remind everybody that we, that we offer that and that we're proud that we offer that.
Yes.
But no, I don't think that. So, I, go ahead, Dave.
Because I'm glad you're here, David, and I certainly don't want to monopolize this because you know how much I could dive into AP scores because I really am fascinated by this. But when I look back, year after year after year, the national passing rate, the classes we offer, like for example, Macro, Micro and Psych, every single year, we do not meet the national passing rate. We do not exceed the number of kids, if anything, the numbers are going down. What's going on?
So, I think there's a number of ways of looking at it. Certainly one way is, you know, we can say, should we be getting better scores and there's a way to dig in there. But I think there's a deeper story also, Deb. And one of the things, and again, I'm not going to reiterate it just to sort of beat the statement, but, you know, open enrollment allows students to make selections. So, there are certain courses that I will inherently know how they unfold in terms of where students kind of look at their schedules. So, when I think of an AP Psych class, I think of a class that often may be the only AP class that a student may take or one of a select few numbers. So, you know, there's a distinction between a student that over their high school career may take five, six, seven, eight AP courses, where they're very used to that level of academic rigor. Our open enrollment program allows students who maybe in other schools would take zero AP classes to maybe take one, two or three. And what that demonstrates for those students, regardless of score on the AP exam, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily okay, but regardless of score on the AP exam, what that does for that student in terms of demonstrating academic rigor when they're applying to college makes a significant difference for that student. So, I know there are neighboring schools here in the River towns that actually flip what we do. They have open enrollment and honors classes, but then they have a selection process in all of their AP courses. So, I'm not sure what is better or worse. I think in some ways our data is tied together. Raina's going to go through and I'm here to help understand. For the first time ever, we've put some of our school profile data in. And what we didn't even put in is, what I think is really powerful, is where our students have been getting into schools and where they're going to schools over the last six years. So, ultimately, it's all about kind of knowing where our kids fall. AP Macro and Micro, you know, you're looking at two senior social studies classes where a great majority of our seniors feel compelled to take at least one and often two of those classes. And it's kind of their last effort to demonstrate to colleges upon their application that they're in AP courses. Whether it's right or wrong, you know, at times we start to see a little bit of deficiency in terms of senioritis and how it turns out. The bad news about AP Macro is you learn it in the beginning of the year, but you take the test at the end of the year. So, I, again, I'm not trying to excuse any of it away. I certainly think that there's, you know, potentially some room for deeper inspection and ways to understand how can we elevate those scores, but I also think there's a deeper and more well-rounded understanding of what's going on there.
I, I hear what you're saying, having had seniors in those courses personally, but what I come down to as a board member is every single year, we do not meet the national passing. So, how can you discount that it's not curriculum and instruction? How do we know that it's truly senioritis? If we have, like, how, how did you make that determination when I know that we're not, we're not, we're not asking the kids on the way out of the AP, hey, did you study? Did you take this class seriously? We're not doing like an exit, that kind of survey, if you will. So, how do we know for sure that it's not due to possibly that not teaching the full curriculum? We run out of time, for example?
Right.
Or there's a different instructional practice that should be implemented? How did you make that determination?
And I don't know that I'm standing here tonight to tell you that it's only the factor of senioritis. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to say that and say that, you know, I've dismissed everything else. I think it's a fair question. I, you know, I don't know that I have a direct answer to say, I know definitively that it's one versus the other. And certainly it could be an area for deeper analysis.
So, I would say will be. So, when we look at this, I mean, I think for, for me, you know, and David and I, obviously and Chris, we've spent a lot of time looking at these slides and trying to make sure we were giving you sort of a clear picture. That's why putting in the numbers of students felt important. You know, and for me, adding this to the student performance report, I think it's pretty eye-opening. And when you, you know, sometimes when you look at something like on a chart or you're looking at one course here or one course there and you're looking across, you, you read that data and you try to understand that data. But when, I think when we created these slides and we started to look and see what it looked like, I think it does raise some really good questions. And, and by the way, I think questions that our teachers are willing to delve into. I don't think it's like, oh, we don't want to know. I, I think that we need to do a better job of understanding our patterns. I don't think reacting in one, any one given year is ever a good response, but I think looking at patterns is really important. And I think clearly there are some patterns that need to be examined.
I, I hear you. I guess the reason I'm maybe sounding a little, you know, kind of pushing back a little bit is that we had the exact same analysis in twenty sixteen. So, this is now the third year, because I can tell you specifically, in twenty sixteen, Macro was fifty-seven percent, Micro was sixty-seven percent and Psych was sixty-four, almost exactly the same.
Right. But not the numbers of students?
Oh, well, oh, you mean in terms of us looking at it?
Right, in other words-
But what is that, what is that?
Well, I guess we're trying, because we're trying to see exactly, I think what you're saying is, are our numbers of students are changing? So, is there, is this, are the scores in some way, shape or form representing a different population of kids? A larger number, a smaller number?
What I find fascinating is that the more the class has grown and the more popular the class has become-
Yeah.
We're actually meeting the national passing rate.
I know.
For the classes that are-
Right, so here's a good example.
Are consistently, the smaller classes, that we've never met the national passing rate. And I, I, I'm frustrated as a parent because we pay ninety dollars a class also, to be quite honest, and our kids are taking it. And I do agree with you, Dave, there, there's definitely senioritis out there. But I think now that we're the third year looking at the APs in this fashion and, you know, presented as it is, that I would hope that we're in a position now to say, you know, what else is going on? And if we really think it's the students, I would suggest, let's ask them. You know, you could ask a senior on the way out, even a year after they graduate, did you study? Did you take the class seriously? And if they say, were you prepared for the class, I mean, for the test by the time you got there? But I, I think to keep offering the class year after year and never hitting that national passing standard, I think is a real shame. And I will say, just for the sake of the, for the rest of those who are diving into the APs as much, it's not just the three classes, I think that most of us who have seniors know are the senior classes, which are Psych, Macro and Micro. It's environmental science, physics, Calc A, Calc B, Spanish. I mean, we're not meeting that, not just New York State, but national. So, I think it's, I think it's really good data that I hope that, like you said, that this high school and our department is going to look at very quickly.
Yep.
No question.
I have a different take on it because I love the fact that Irvington has an open enrollment policy-
So do I, Maria.
Yeah, no, no, I know you do. Because the reality is, is most of our kids are going off to college, so if they're not, you know, there are certain students that come into high school and their AP, you know, honors everything, and there are other kids who build that. So, I love the fact that we offer it to anyone. And you know what? If they go in that class and they tried their hardest and they got a C plus and that was their best grade, well, great for them. So, I love that. So, I think that does skew the numbers. Where I look at it and as, you know, comparing year to year, I'm not so worried about the national average as I am about the growth year to year. And I do look at whether the numbers have increased in a particular class and how those numbers look. So, that's actually what, where I'm looking. And I do, you've mentioned some of the classes that I, even though the numbers, some of them are growing, those grades are exactly the same. So, that, that, you know, I think that tells us something.
Well, I think the line chart in this case is act, I think you're right, and I think that's what, you know, we looked at as well, right? You know, obviously, when we look at, you know, World History, you see that number and it's the only non-open AP course. Just, I don't know if other people know that as well.
Which one?
Which one?
AP-
World History.
Is a, you have to apply, so to speak, to get in it. It's a sophomore. It's our first AP offered for sophomores.
Very hard.
And it is a very hard class. And our students, they will.
Yeah.
It's not open?
Only one.
Only one?
In tenth grade.
There's a challenge.
But thank you for the information. I think, and I will say, because it's been consistently since twenty sixteen, been given to us in the same format, it really, you know, and I do think adding the number of students is really important. I mean, and I, I also think adding the number of students will beg the question at some point, if we continue to have four students in a class and we continue to offer the class.
Well, I think that's right. I mean, that's another question and-
I mean-
When do we ask it?
I don't know. You know, because what happens is, right, we, we say, well, there's only consistently four students in that class. Well, you know, for many years, that's what, what Irvington now has supported. And if your, your child is in that, one of those four, it's as important to you as any of the other classes. So, I, I don't know where we ask it, but, I mean, we certainly could look and examine those kinds of numbers going into, you know, next year and going into budget. But I, I, I do fear that sometimes, and we've seen it in some of our kids, some of those courses that have low enrollment over the years produce really outstanding students who excel, go on to college, major in those areas. So, I don't know, I think we're all reluctant to not provide opportunity. So, that's a collective decision, I would say.
And I will say, like, French is a good example. An AP French course, if you're going to major in a language, not to have that and have that opportunity, it would be disturbing. My son was a music major, he just couldn't work in AP Music, but he would have been at a great advantage going into college with that underspelt, but it just didn't work. So, sometimes you alternate and sometimes you just have to run it with four kids because it's a culmination.
Who's going to take the test now?
Part, I think part of what you're saying, Davis, how do you know that it's part of a larger program? You mean, you know, AP French is one, but actually, I'd be happy to share, you know, this year, we saw the numbers go up and I, I think we're on a trend now to see that the numbers go up. We actually saw that happen in our AP Spanish program at a pretty staggering and significant rate. And I, and I think we're going to see some, some similar trends in French. But some of those little numbers are also, you know, they're part of other programs. So like, we look at our AP art numbers, and while they may appear small, they're actually, it's a class that serves three levels of art simultaneously, and the teacher is able to balance that. So it's not a class, in that case, that's only run with four students. You know, and then like AP Computer Science and those classes are another area where, you know, they haven't been four, but we've seen those numbers around 10. But, you know, we've also spoken in here about the importance of coding and the, you know, the importance of trying to grow that program. So again, not a perfect answer, and certainly worth inspection. But, you know, I think we start to talk about some of those specialty areas that, you know, in some ways, I would say defines a little bit of who we are as well.
So because as we've talked about, the challenge of being a small school, right? So that, that's where our numbers make it challenging for us. And you can look, and we have talked about computer science and how we went a series of years, we didn't have, we, we had such a dip in our, in interest. And so we look at these numbers, because these numbers are important. So I don't want to minimize the importance of the scores, but, but participation is one of, one of our number-one goals in a school, right? Is to get kids to participate and try something and do it and go into that AP course that maybe they wouldn't have gone into.
You know what, Raina?
We negotiate a lot of pieces around this.
I'm going to say that it's amazing, the variety that you offer the kids here, the opportunities, numbers aside, just for a moment, right? Like, if you're a kid coming into this district and you realize that you have this array of opportunities, that's a really nice thing. I appreciate seeing that. You know, and you can dig into the data the same way I always do. But at the end of the day, like, as a parent and as a member of the community, you know, sort of representing the brand of our schools, right? At the end of the day, that's a really good label to have up there. Like, you have this opportunity.
I totally agree. I just think we can do both.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, also, just to give a little historical perspective, as I think the only graduate in the room, I-
I can confirm that fact.
When I graduated my senior year, we offered four AP classes. That was it.
You're pretty old.
Yeah.
That was the season.
Yeah, so, and the growth that, you know, obviously it's been a longer time ago, but there weren't those opportunities for, because I remember asking, can I take AP Physics? We don't offer it. Can't sit for the test, can't do it. There may would have been five kids who would want to take it. Now we offer those opportunities, but I think says something about, you know, the, what we're trying to do to let our kids stretch and try to challenge themselves. So I think, you know, there's the challenge of running classes with small numbers, but also it does allow for maybe a kid to find a passion in a subject that may lead to a lifetime of learning.
Yeah. And I have to say, the flexibility that the high school shows, you know, because there are a variety of players in scheduling and trying to make things work for a school district, like you said earlier about, you know, interest, small numbers, and small classes, and showing the flexibility and working it in with other classes and the staff also, is tremendous. And it's amazing.
And I would say it's a commitment, right? It's a commitment on all of our parts. So, but, having said that, I think there's still work that we could do to look at some of this data that would-
I will, I will add, though, really quickly, just like, just to slant back to sort of my passion, which would be really interesting, not at this meeting necessarily, but like over the course of the year, even in those roundtables that we have, to sort of dig into as we develop those systems of looking at assessment, our own formative assessment, seeing sort of the real quality of those coursework. Again, in accordance with the goal of Objective A, right, which was Objective A. That's a high instructional rigor, right? Like, and really, how are we meeting that goal on a day-to-day basis? Because we see this at the end. Be nice to see.
Look, just a tidbit, I don't reckon that's what we're starting to talk about, but we can get to the next level. The correlation of this data with other data. Does our participation in APs impact how kids are doing on other, on their SATs or ACTs because they're getting exposed to more rigor early on? And if we see a correlation there? And there's lots of questions going back to the next level that Dave is starting to talk about.
Well, I actually wrote down, even when we were thinking about the, I just think about Dow's Lane, where we have like all this robust systems going on now that we, that are really a mile off of where we're heading. You know, and thinking about, like, for example, we talk about screen time a lot, right? And, you know, a lot of our kids at Dow's, or the kids at Dow's or Main Street are on Excel Math, and they're supplementing with these great programs and A to Z and, you know, all these other things. And it would be interesting to see, like, the correlative between the data from like an Excel Math versus where those kids wind up. It would just really be interesting. I agree with you, Ryan.
And the last thing I'd say, Raina, is that to the extent that when we dive deeper, you dive deeper into some of the, looking at this AP information, to the extent is there an opportunity possibly for professional development? Maybe there is some type of PD revolved around teaching, you know, he'd say teaching to the test, but maybe we're not covering enough of the curriculum. We're not going deeper into some of the curriculum in some of the classes. Because I do believe these students work hard. And I think that the score, as much as we want to say open enrollment is a great thing, the score is important. I mean, let's not forget that if you get a four or a five, for many of these students, you're able to wade into a college course and not go in at an entry level and be able to accelerate again. It saves you money, it saves you time, and it's part of what we're preparing our students to do. So to constantly kind of minimize, oh, the score doesn't matter, I think it's doing it a disservice to some of the kids. And a PD can get us there. I would suggest that's also a great thing.
Yeah.
I don't mean to minimize, when I made my comments earlier, it wasn't minimizing the importance of this. I mean, having girls go to college and going into school with a lot of credits, I mean, the flexibility that it gives you in taking the pressure off and not having to take such heavy course loads, you know, and being able to take advantage of other things the school offers is, is an amazing opportunity. And it's a piece of the puzzle. It's a piece of the story, I feel.
So each year, we share some historical data. So this just gives you some of that longitudinal. It lets you look at a cohort of students. And again, this gives you that cohort look, but it doesn't necessarily take into account what's changed in any given year. You know, three days of testing to two days of testing, the kinds of questions that were asked, but it gives you, but it's a window in. That was for math. That's a lot of, this, this, these are a lot of lines for me. I know some people like them. I find them.
Really?
In black and white, they're better.
To me, that says something.
I know, you like these. I, I find them very challenging.
You can see where you, what it, the kids.
Yeah, I, I understand.
You can see, you see the trends. Everybody digs, and you didn't, makes sense.
We're recording this, I just want to make sure we-
I think it's just the kind of learner you are. I think it's just we all take in visual data differently.
Yeah. It answers a lot of those questions to me as it relates to when you talk about where trends are, the trajectory of a particular class, the, how they achieve a level of efficiency. So you can talk, look into, I can see kids, I can see overall curriculum over time, and you can discount where those bumps are related to tests. Because you're going to see your peer groups, they're going to, everybody should move in the same kind of pattern associated with that.
Right. Like, yeah, I actually find this fascinating. I wish we were another color besides green, so we would pop out a little bit more. But, you know, like even looking at 7th grade, for example, here, are we on the same one, by the way? I'm on ELA, for example. And it shows in 7th grade, like, everyone's line went up. In 6th grade, a lot of peoples went down, even though we didn't really go down, we kind of stayed consistent, maybe a little bit up. But it, it does help put it in perspective to see how other people are doing compared to you. But, I mean, ultimately, you just want to see growth in your own law. Yes.
So we added a couple of pieces tonight that hopefully address some of the questions or the approaches that you're looking for us to include more of. I understand you want more of it. But this would be an attempt to infuse a piece for, at every level. So when, you know, Dave, Chris and I, we talked, and one of the things that, you know, the big picture when it comes to high school is the high school profile. It's a way to actually look across, and we were able to look across multiple years. So what you're seeing here is basically the high school profile pulled apart. And so obviously, numbers of students. So I'll go a little slow here. I don't know if you want to go slide by slide and ask some questions or-
Graduating class. Graduating class. Is that what, good number?
We probably should add, Chris, we probably should add, this is total enrollment. We probably add a total enrollment.
Twenty-seven kids.
Road away. That would, you know what I mean? Like, because that's the numbers, like, how many numbers of students are going to be in a year might be helpful.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you go back a slide?
Sure.
I'm wrestling with whether 82% is a good number of four-year colleges. Like, what, like, if 82% of our 127 kids, man, Brian, help me quick. What is the number of kids?
Out of 127, about 98 kids.
Ninety kids, so what about the other third, like, is that a good number? Like, is 90 kids out of 127 a good number? Are kids going to four-year colleges?
I'd say, I think Dave can speak to it. I think we're seeing a growing trend in the region of kids that are going to two-year schools, that whether it be economic reasons, they're not certain as to the area that they want to study just yet. So I think there's a growing trend regionally or nationally towards a two-year school.
I mean, I would also argue we're getting more kids into two-year colleges that, you know, in previous, previous generations may not have gone to college at all. So, I mean, is it 82 or 85? I mean, consistently, we've seen 85% here across the board, a good number. I'm not sure that I can comment on whether it's a good number or a bad number. You know, I also know when we go deeper into those numbers and we see the types of schools that our students are going to and where they're getting accepted to, we've definitely seen a significant change over the years. So, I mean, ultimately, overall, I would say that, you know, we've seen a growth in terms of what we're seeing in our school profile year, you know, as a trend over time. So I would like to say, yes, we're proud of the work that we, and the data that it shows. But the question that you're asking, I think, is a fair one. I'm not sure that I have a specific answer to.
I was just curious.
No, and I just wanted to comment that there's a movement now to purposely go into an honors program in a community college for two years because you're guaranteed entrance into more prestigious colleges from those programs.
I also would say that there will always be a population of Irvington students who are not college-bound, that have made other choices, and that we've supported those choices in multiple ways, whether that's through vocational programs, through the Bridges Program, which some kids are college-bound, some are not, so.
I'll also add that we've seen an uptick in recent years of the number of students starting to think about gap years. So how that impacts, and, you know, students doing things before they go to college, you know, is starting to, you know, be a little bit more than just one or two a year.
Thank you.
Okay, so advanced placement, and this just sort of gives you that bigger picture. AP Scholars, National AP, AP Scholars with Honor. So tonight, we also, we are sharing ACT, and the ACT composite is broken down in a couple of slides. We broke down SAT. See the change? So I'm just going slow if somebody wants to ask a question.
I never realized that every SAT two our students take automatically goes to the school. So results?
Dave?
I didn't realize that. So when our students take SAT twos, the results automatically go to the high school?
I believe when students take SATs or SAT twos, they have the ability to have it automatically go or choose to share it as they deem fit. So I don't think it has to automatically go to colleges.
So, so the colleges in the high school-
To come back to Irvington, is the question.
Oh, to come back to us?
I'm sorry, I meant the high school.
Oh, I'm sorry. So what we do is, we don't get individual student scores. We, we get from college board summary scores. So we get summary of exams.
So this, this, this information as is, was presented to the high school from SAT?
Correct. Correct. So we didn't compile it based on pulling it from each student score and then calculating our own averages.
But you do get the individual scores.
So that is student data. That's not, that's not, that's not high school data. We don't report those scores. Those, those scores are controlled by students.
Yeah, and so, and likewise, so when we're looking at information on SAT and ACT, this is not, this is not coming from our kids. This is coming from the data testing service that is-
Correct. And again, summary data.
In a summary form.
Correct.
So we really don't know how many, how many, how many of those scores, like, do we have the number of scores? Like, there's, there's 127 kids in the grade.
Good question, David. I, I think we may know numbers.
Yes.
How many students participate in each of these exams?
We can get numbers associated with each of those, those needs.
I'm just curious, how competent we are. This is representative of our kids, is it, is it?
Well, it's representative of our kids in terms of it's our comprehensive data. How does it representative, when you're looking at this, let's say you're looking at the German number in 2016, I think, as I'm looking up there. I mean, quite honestly, that may be representative of a single student who took that exam.
And the same would hold true when, Raina, gets to the ACT scores.
So, and I think you're seeing, right, so this is, we, it's broken down into two different slides, right? ACT before 2015. And then ultimately, you can see how they have expanded. Interesting, they have STEM, right? I mean, it's, it's, which is a composite of the math and science, ELA, composite of the English, reading and writing.
Can you just speak to the 8.1 for writing? Because that obviously stands out as a different type of number than the other.
Sure. So in looking at this, I was curious, because that was like an odd number. It felt, you know, very different. So I think, does it, I think it says it at the bottom. I included it, right? An average score on the current ACT, writing, right? So eight. So you can see that for highly selective colleges, you'll want a score of eight or higher. Scores of 10, 11, and 12 obvi, truly stand out. So you can see, the other thing that-
Raina, do they, do they change the way you're-
They change, yes. They change it. So the highest score you could get is a 12. Right.
Two people score it, and they add it together.
So they changed the scale.
They changed the scale.
Okay?
I need a problem now.
The question is, what is the scale that changed?
I want to say, well, the, the number that you could get for the writing?
Yeah, let me see.
Because all the other sections is 36, is the highest. But I don't remember what the writing was. I don't think it was a 36, was it?
The scale changed between this year and this year.
And it's also an optional component.
Right. It's optional. Not everybody takes it.
Okay.
We could find out.
Okay. So again, this is from the profile. So Dave, I don't know if you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the first projects I worked on when I became principal was to overhaul the profile from what it was to eventually what it became. So what you'll see in the class of 2014 and 15 is that we originally presented our graduating class GPA data based on the first four deciles. So if you think of breaking your GPAs into 10 distinct deciles, we would provide the top four. So students who were performing in the top four had their scores highlighted. And we went through a lot of work. I know that the PAC was highly involved in evolving the process. I think the year before I became principal, I want to say that the, we had other committees I think the year before I became principal, I want to say that the, we had other committees that were working on it as well. So, eventually, we felt that maybe it wasn't providing the best data, and as you could see, eventually, what it's become in the last three years is to show the mean GPA for the grade, the median GPA, and the range of GPAs from high to low, which is consistent with the way a lot of schools do it. And in addition to that, you should keep in mind that this is the GPA, so it's for the class that is going to be graduating. So it's their profile, so it's the GPA through their junior year, because we release profiles in early September.
Can I just say something? Thank you. This is a nice addition. I always give you a hard time, so I thought I would say that this speaks to a move in the direction. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. So, the next level of addition is what we did in looking at each of our schools. So this was our middle school ELA data, and I wanted to just show you sort of over time, so, looking at the different standards, and you can see from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen how our kids performed. This is data that's then analyzed, not so much across, not longitudinal as much, as the that year's data. So, working with Sarah Rust, the instructional coach, she worked with the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade teachers, ELA teachers, to look at the data from two thousand and eighteen to examine how our kids performed, where our kids had success rates that were high or low, and then in turn, what would that, what is the level of work that needed to be, that was worth examining? You know, I think that this is valuable for our teachers to see the longitudinal so that they understand, right? They see those dips, and they see, and sometimes we can explain it away, and sometimes we can actually explain it away. Sometimes we focus on a standard, and then there isn't as many questions on that particular standard in there. But this has been an important look. This is the probably second or third year that Sarah's done this, where she meets with the teachers, the ELA teachers, along with David and Allison, to look at this. And then ultimately, for teachers to target and make decisions. So, this was the sixth grade, seventh grade, and then eighth grade. And in many cases, you can actually see where we did move. Again, I'm always cautious, because the, this is the different cohort each year. This isn't looking at the same cohort and their growth. But it is helpful, because this is what speaks to curriculum and instruction, right? So if we are performing in the same level, on the same standard, year after year after year, then, so again, this is the third year that they've been, that they've been examining data.
But the first time you presented it to us, it's very exciting. Thank you again.
You're welcome. And eighth grade.
This is important, this is, this is, yeah.
So, a couple of things that are worth, as part of this process, because it's not, sorry, Dave, it's not only the data that's important, it's understanding, it's understanding the roadmap and where things are going. So, a couple of other pieces that came out of the data analysis with the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade teachers is worth just noting here, right? So, two new guiding principles, notice next-gen standards. We're no longer talking about Common Core, but they are still not assessing next-gen completely. So, it's, again, it poses those issues. So timeline, full implementation of new standards starting in fall two thousand and twenty. So, you know, as teachers, you're sort of in both camps, right? You want to make sure you're teaching to the standards, but you also want to make sure that you're foreshadowing the new standards and where we need to be going. Revised three-ELA assessments, no timeline yet for high school assessment. Worth noting for us, for high school, ELA regions, we give it in tenth grade to all students. That varies across the region. Some schools give it the ELA assessment in eleventh grade. Some schools do what we used to do, which was divide it. They would give it in tenth grade to honors students, and we would give it to tenth grade to our honors students, and eleventh grade to our non-honors students. When the new test came out, we changed that practice in order to give kids the option of different opportunities for courses in eleventh and twelfth grade, rather than keeping them in a region's track. Again, text definitions, just really interesting, right? Look what they call text now. So, when I share this, because what it tells you is the range of what teachers are teaching in their classrooms has increased significantly as a result of the standards. Printed material, speech, graphics, visual art, digital representations, video, other visual and audio, depictions of ideas, concepts, and experiences. So, the expectations of what our teachers are providing in the ELA classroom has broadened quite significantly under that definition of text. Same thing, literature is pretty much the same, and informational text, I would say, is pretty much consistent with the kinds of learning that we've had in our classrooms.
I did a question, just with the two new guiding principles, I hope I didn't miss you saying it, but, for example, with the second one, the lifelong practices of readers, how does that surface in, you know?
So, these are the new standards. So that, these are two, these are new guiding principles. I would say that, interestingly, I think we've, that's something we've always been trying to address through, I mean, it's one of the reasons that we're committed to at the elementary level, Reader's Workshop model. You know, part of Reader's Workshop, the whole idea of it is to really develop kids who love reading. And so that whole idea of being readers and writers, and that would be our boardwork as well. Like, we want kids to understand and know how to write, but we also want kids to have passion. Passion is readers and writers.
So this is, this is across all our grades, these guiding principles?
These aren't, these are the two guiding principles of the next-gen standards. So, all of the next-gen standards have actually underlying principles that drive them. The math standards have them, the science standards have them. So, this was Sarah Rust leading work with the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade ELA teachers around the expectations for the standards. Does that make sense, Michael, or I'm not answering your question?
So, for example, with the lifelong practices of readers and writers, that driving a shift in terms of when it says to write and read for enjoyment, is that something that is being discussed among teachers in terms of?
Well, yeah, that's why I'm saying, this is what they were using, and so they're looking at the date and how kids are doing, but they're also looking at what this sort of overarching or underlying principles are that we should be enjoying in our schools. I didn't answer your question. I don't know what to say. You want to ask me another question?
Are you asking what?
I know what you're asking. Can I help you?
If you want to go first, yeah.
With the Common Core came in, it became a lot about nonfiction, 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 right? We could get into a whole discussion about that another time, but I think, Michael, what you're asking is, does that quote, and that piece of this, of the advanced literacy, mean that we're bringing kids back to this joy of reading, whatever it is that they're reading? Did I phrase that correctly?
I think that's what the shift in the state is representing, yes. And something that I think Reina was saying, that we've always embraced, but now you're able to kind of wrap your arms around a little bit, because the new standards are aligning with that as well.
This is, again, this whole idea of reading guidelines. So, this is what our classrooms are going to have to look like. Again, this rollout is not yet for another year, so we're still living with some of the old while we're rolling in some, or layering in some of the new. So these were just some takeaways from that data study, because, you know, I think that this idea of, again, we want to walk around, we want to walk away with the vision of that data dive, but we also know that we need to draw some conclusions. So, these were just some of the conclusions that came through that process. So K five, we took a look at math. So these were just some examples. So, one of the things that Christine Rosner is doing an amazing job of is ensuring that our second-grade teachers understand that their, the work that they do really does influence especially third grade. K and one does as well, but obviously, the closer you get to that testing grade, the more relevant it begins to feel. So you can see, this was, and again, we give you multiple years of how we performed, our building success rate. So, the standard is, standard three gave you, provided you with that data, but more importantly, the how. So what did we do? We did the data analysis with our teachers, and then we made decisions around curriculum and instruction of what are we going to do in our classrooms to ultimately shift practice. So ultimately, if I go to that last line, so what did we do? We tightened our pacing. What happened was, we recognized that we weren't moving fast enough, but we had to figure out where we could really, where we could move faster, and where we actually can't move faster, because you know what? Developmentally, they're not ready to move faster. So that's the work of, again, our instructional coaches are doing that level of work. They are leading the work of looking at this data and understanding it, and then being able to make change. So you can see, here's an example from second grade, and as you can see, we grew from, in two thousand and fifteen, seventy-two percent success to ninety-one percent, again, different cohort of kids. I caution you, so I, I love those numbers, but I want to be mindful that they're not the same kids. You can also see what happens, is we, we do something and we shift our practice, and then in two thousand and seventeen, there were no questions for that standard. So, hard to measure, a little frustrating, like, if you're working towards something, and then it's like, damn, you know, how do we know? But, you know, I think Christine is also really good at looking to see what the expectations would be, and certainly considering that chances were that it was going to show up again in the near future. In third grade, there was a lot of work around fractions. They had done a really good look at the data, but not only the math data from the state test, but also their math module data. So this is a place where they're doing the correlation of both data sets. They look at math module data on a regular basis. All data gets entered and organized, and then reviewed for changes, changes over time, as well as ultimately performance. Also, performance from class to class, and that's not always a representation of an individual teacher, actually, but again, very often, it can be pacing, right? A teacher who's moving slower or faster, the teacher who feels like, you know what, I know you're all moving really fast, but my kids didn't get it yet, I'm going slower, I'm going to, I'm going to slow down this year, in this unit, because I have to. So again, it's the how. And so here's an example of PD. In a learning session, we talked about how to partition number lines, blah, blah, blah. So learning sessions is the work that Christine Rosner leads by grade level. She does that work multiple times a year, and the teachers work through, the first learning session is always the review of data in each year, and then, over the course of the year, they work through different aspects based on that data dive that they did in the beginning of the school year. So you can see how, and ultimately, the result and the change over time. Fourth grade, here's an example of fourth grade. We actually didn't have any, we didn't have it from this last test, but when looking at it, we talked about how this is something they continue to work on and continue to grow, and we look forward to two thousand and nineteen data.
That's great. I mean, look at that.
So, what you're seeing there, that's an example of what Christine and Nancy both do during their learning sessions. They embed their test questions, and they ultimately analyze those test questions to determine why the success rate, or lack of success rate, was ultimately-
Justifying why we put Christine into that position all those years back, right? There it is. Michael, come on.
And here's an example from fifth grade. So again, same idea, question, understood data dive, look and see, what are we going to work on? And then ultimately, so here's an example of summer work. So one of the things that I wanted you to notice as we went through here is the change happened through a variety of different ways. It wasn't just one way. It doesn't all happen in summer. It doesn't all happen on a PLRD day. It doesn't all happen in a learning session or a grade-level meeting. You know, we have constant access points to ensure that we are, you know, that we're addressing this work throughout the year, and then ultimately into summer. So again, I think, I'm hoping that what you were able to see tonight is some broad looks of data. I try to show you things that we're doing consistently, not one-offs, like, that's happening in one place, you know, for five minutes. I'm trying to give you a window into the kind of work that we do and have been doing on a regular basis, and that this is, you know, sort of where our practice is at this point.
Reina, just a couple of questions based on what you just talked about. Did I, do you correctly that at least at the elementary level, all the math modules that the kids are doing, you know, in TV throughout the year, that data is being entered and looked at and used as part of the analysis?
Mm-hmm.
And is there either currently done or thought to do, to see how that then correlates to then what the state test scores look like, to see if we see, have alignment or not?
So, yes, and in some ways, that's really what you're seeing. In other words, what we're looking at is, this is the path. We go to our state data, we look at how we do in our state data, then we go to our math modules, right? And then we continue, so we change our practice in the math module, then we measure our math module success, right? So, what you would see is that if we're experiencing increased success in this standard, we're seeing increased success in the module itself.
Do we do that in the high school?
That's, well-
Before you answer that, I feel like, time and time again, you give us, you know, because, you know, especially me, I've been out of the elementary schools, and it's, it looks so different now compared to my, when my kids were there. I feel like I have a really good idea as to all the work that's going on, how you're using different data points and revamping, I don't know, revamping, but tweaking your curriculum, looking back, being reflective, and making changes. And I know I've been asking this question in different ways over the past two years since I've been back on the board, but I don't, I don't feel like I see that in the secondary level. So maybe with that, you don't have to answer it now, but maybe, you know, when you present at the end of June, maybe between the high school and the middle school, somehow you can get together and frame that for us, to show us, like, you know, even using the examples of, like, using the example with Sarah Rust for one thing, but I keep hearing, you know, I'm having a brain block on it.
This is for the record, that's the same thing I asked.
You know, I keep hearing the names, but they don't, you know-
And I would say, and you know, Dave, being that you're here, I could say this, you know, maybe for the end, we could share some examples of social studies. You know, Jeff Reek is the Social Studies Chair, and you know, Jeff has done some phenomenal data work, looking at the work of social studies across six, twelve. So, you know, I think that one of the pieces that is a takeaway for me, I mean, certainly, Ali Tempest and the World Language teachers have done some phenomenal work around World Language, six through twelve. So we do have examples, six through twelve.
And I think you have shown that to us, especially with the Apple assessment-
Yes.
And you've shown that growth.
Yeah. So, and I think the commonality, you know, I think that one of the things that we're looking at is really using some summer, and summer work with chairs, to really look and decide what data are we correlating, and how do we look at that data every, like, as just part of our practice? What are we looking at? How do we analyze it? How do we make sense of it? And how does it inform ultimately our understanding and our curriculum and instruction, right? So if we consistently are scoring at a certain level, and that level doesn't feel sufficient, whatever that level may be, then we need to examine why, and we need to understand why.
Yeah, I think, you know, that goes back to the, which is, understanding also what the data means. I think it's unrealistic to expect you're going to get to a hundred percent or ninety-five percent in certain areas, but, you know, what is it that we think is a realistic and appropriate level for us to be at, at different points? And I guess the other question, since everything is depending on that year's cohort, is there either an ability or thought to look at any sort of normalizing between, we see the growth, is it, is it instruction-based, or is it that one cohort just happens to be stronger than the other, and, or driven by that, then maybe a change in practice?
So I think that, right, I totally agree, Brian, and I think that's why we're also looking, right, for growth over time as well, right? We should see the number change. One of the things, though, in actually preparing for this and looking at some of our ELA scores, that was a good example of where we did see where there were six questions for one standard, and in any given year, when we just show you fifteen, see, we don't know, like, how deeply was it assessed, right? So if we're asking six questions that links to a standard, and our kids are scoring at a success rate of ninety-one percent, that's pretty good, because there's a lot of evidence. If we're looking at something where there was only one question, and our kids scored an even, forget low, scored it a ninety-one percent, you know, that question may have just been very relevant for our kids, and they were able to answer it. So I think it is really important to be, understand what we're looking at and what the variables are in understanding change over time.
Yeah, I agree. As you know, I'm a huge proponent of data, more data, and seeing the data, but I think you also have to understand what the data is and what it's telling us and where it's useful to us. There's, you know, lies, damn lies, and statistics, so-
That's right.
You know, it makes statistics and data say a lot of different things, but it's diving into understanding what is the data that we think is most important, most valuable, and most robust.
Right.
Only question I had is, can, have you considered putting this report on the website?
Yeah, we will.
You will?
Absolutely.
Which student performance? Not for docs.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm just going to say thank you again. Yeah, I'd like to say thank you one more time.
I really, I really appreciate this, the new addition. It's a great way, it's the way I wanted to see this aspect, which is, here's what we had, here's what we did to adjust it, here's, you know, what we were able to see, so, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, it's great, it's a nice evolution. Of course, I'm going to want to see more, because that's what we always do, but, but this is-
But this is-
I'm not saying that you want-
This is great. This is a really, you know, nice solution, I think.
Answers the question.
I think, you know, maybe after we can all gather some of the longitudinal data that people were talking about earlier, and trying to present that in a more easy way for everyone to follow. Could be, I think, a helpful, I know you can do it, we have the game that's easy.
Yeah.
A helpful next step in the studio to see that in one place.
Sure.
Whatever, this was very helpful.
Good.
I do want to give opportunity for anyone who has questions related to the performance report, so- So anybody who would like to stand up and ask a question at the microphone, here's an opportunity. If you could share your name and keep your comments or questions to approximately three minutes.
Hi, I'm Erin Bernstein. I'm the parent of a third grader at Dowsley. This is definitely a lot of data to take in, hard to all absorb while it's all being presented. But one of my questions, which was answered at the end, was, do we have goals for all of this data? So if I saw this slide correctly, we're looking to establish goals. Is that for each grade, for each test? Like, what's the thought process on how those goals will evolve? And are they individual Irvington goals, or are they also going to be benchmarked against our other cohort, the other cohorts? Do we have a, I don't know if you have a thought on that yet.
Yeah, I mean, I'm cautious around setting goals around state data. I think you see the work, I mean, we believe in it, we believe that we should be addressing it, we believe that we should be also growing it. So for me, when I think we have goals, and we have goals around data and including data, this is the level of work that we should be doing. So that if on the 2019 test, I feel, I would want you as community members in our board to feel that if all of a sudden, like, we now have a dip in something, like, we're paying attention to that, right? Like, we're not just saying, oh, all right, whatever. No, we go and we're looking, and we're examining, and we're saying the why. So that's, Erin, maybe what I just said is, may be helpful to this as well. So if we, what we're assuring you of is, we're going and we're looking. If it turns out there was one question, we dipped, and our score was like, ultimately, you know, showed lower performance, but it was because there was one question, and our students did poorly on it, or our students just didn't do as well, it was still only one question. So we have to consider that. So I think what I would like our goal to be, from my standpoint, is the commitment to looking at our data, understanding our data, and making sure that we are moving where we need to move, but not just responding to the change or the change of a test. You know, I mean, quite honestly, I have some concerns for 2020, that they're going to roll out a new test. I don't know that when we're sitting in that, in this room that night, and you're looking at that new data, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen. When we're now comparing the last four years, and all of a sudden, new test happens. But the commitment and the goal is to make sure we're understanding it, and we're taking action where we need to, and we're clear on why. Is it our curriculum? Is it our instruction? Or is it in some way, some other component that we're not considering as to why it happened? And to me, I think as a district, that should be our goal, but...
So if I hear you correctly, it's about the structure, the system and structure of using data, regardless of what else is happening, right? Like, in other words...
With the goal to achieve, with the goal for increased performance.
Yes.
Yes.
There's a direct correlation.
That's in the, that's the goal.
That's right.
Yeah, we've seen it.
That's the goal.
But the idea that whatever anybody else is doing, we're building a coherent system and structure for using data, where at the beginning of it, we want to keep moving, or just to move a little quicker, but I've been proponent of badass ongoing, but I think that's what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah.
And I want to point out, I appreciate that you said that we're not being reactive to that one question, because I think sometimes we do get hung up on that.
So my next question, which is, I guess, sort of related to that, is, how do we balance all of this? Because we do understand that there could be that one question that can drive these metrics a certain way, a small population of students taking a particular test in an AP class. How do we balance that, then, with the public, the data that's given out to the public, right? So we all get Westchester magazine, and we all look at how we're ranked and how we're all doing, and potential home buyers do the same thing. So there is also that pressure to be better than our, the other cohorts from a public perspective, and I'll go back to the U.S. News and World Report magazine, and we weren't ranked. And the public sees that and then evaluates us based on that. They're not sitting here in these meetings, really delving in and understanding the data. So how do we balance all of that? Like, it's a dance, like, what's our thought, what are our thoughts on that? We don't have any yet. I don't, I don't have an answer.
You need a question?
So, you know, Raina's saying that we're...
Are you asking why we're not ranked high?
No, we're asking, if you're doing all this work, you're doing all this data, correlation, statistics, what have you, which I don't really, whatever, this is, a lot of this was a, some of it was just a data dump, how are we managing the public's perception of Irvington schools? And, you know, how it relates to real estate prices and everything else, because we were not ranked very highly in U.S. News and World Report, which is kind of counter to everything we said tonight.
And it's a hard dance. I get it, because there's more behind the data than just the numbers, but to the public who's evaluating buying a home, it's strictly those numbers without this two-hour discussion about what's in those numbers, and what the trends are, and what the data looks like. And unfortunately, while we shouldn't be making knee-jerk reactions, I totally agree with that, the public is. So I would hate for the perception of the school district to suddenly decline because of maybe what we think might not be that important, a U.S. News and World Report ranking, or just rankings in general in Westchester magazine. But it is to the public. Whether that's right or wrong, it's the reality of the world we live in. The media drives a lot of perception.
I think there's no one clear answer to that, Erin. I would say that you focus on providing a quality program, right? The types of experiences we have, rich experiences. So I go back to the examples that Brian shared before, from four to 21, and the number of APs, Dave's comment about the array of offerings that we have to the board and administration and communities' commitment to elementary world language. So that, that's one component of the story. But then when you dig in, and you have a systemic approach to utilizing data, analyzing data, I think that grows, right? And that then influenced those different polls and ratings. So there's a variety of different ones out there, they utilize different methodologies, methodologies that do change from year to year sometimes, or from time to time. So it's hard to think that you're targeting one particular one. I think our objective is to do the best that we can for our kids today, to provide a solid program where there's lots of opportunity for enrichment, to look at the growth in programs and offerings. And we talked about our science research program and how that's taking off, right? So it's that idea of building what we have and constantly fine-tuning everything that we do, and that will result in those other measures.
Thank you. May I ask one more question? Can we go back to the slide where we looked at how the cohorts performed over time, where we're looking at third to fourth to fifth to sixth? I'm just curious, what are our expectations for how the student should be doing? And that's my last question.
This one, Erin, or no?
Yeah, I'm just curious, like, what are we expecting? It's so hard to compare, and the starting point is so different.
New York State's at 45% proficient as a whole. I'm just saying, New York State as a whole is 45% proficient.
So that's one benchmark for the data. But year to year, like, how do you evaluate, you know, in 2015, like, grade three was at 63%, and now, last year, we're at 82%? Like, is that a normal jump? Is that an anomaly? Is that because we wanted to get to that? And then, and what's the trend that's being expected?
Raina explained, like, so every given year, there are different numbers of questions on different standards that get measured. So it's, sometimes there's jumps in specific grades based on what the content is on the test. So it's hard to, you know, you'd have to look at, you'd have to literally do a grade-to-grade analysis each year of the 70% of the released questions to look, see how many, I only know this because I've done it for 15 years.
Yeah, no, no, I know, you're, I appreciate that, actually.
There's a danger in looking at any one of these slides and drawing too much. I mean, they've changed the tests, they've changed the cut scores.
But for educators.
You know, opt-outs, there's, you know, there's been, you know, you see in the other slides, the relationship to other districts where you see, you know, simultaneous move up or down. So it's...
And it's also cohort to cohort. Certain grades are higher, you know...
Let me ask the question a different way. Raina, what are, what are you, what are you getting, using this information for?
Now you're asking. Yeah, that's the right question.
Honestly, I feel like it's, it's a window in, but what Michael said is really true. I mean, I think this chart, I don't think this chart is that telling. So I feel like what I...
My point, like, do we need it even?
What I want you to really take away is those last slides, where we're really looking to say, where did we do well, where didn't we do well, and why? And if it is a result of our curriculum and instruction, or need for additional intervention, it is what should be driving our launch of the year. That's really what it is. And then, once the year gets going, we should be embedding the teaching and learning that is missing, is either absent, or not to the standard that it needed to be, in our practice. And then, hope that New York State produces a test the following spring that reflects enough of an assessment of a particular standard. You know, and again, I think that, quite honestly, especially in math, the work that Christine Rosner does on a daily basis, and our teachers are doing on a daily basis, is just phenomenal. And so I, I like having this, but they are constantly looking at their data, so...
And I would say, you know, there are a number of slides, some that have been on this since, for two decades, some that have appeared five or six years ago, and then some of what you're hearing us respond to was new ways of looking at the data, which was showing how you're using that information to drive your refinement of curriculum and instruction. So, you know, this is information that anyone can grab off of, you know, they release it, and you can do, you can do the same things easily in a few minutes. So, but what you don't know are all the different things we were mentioning. So it's, it's, this one is of very limited value, I think.
But look, it's, I'm going to disagree in a good way. So pick one, pick one, pick one. Pick one, anyone?
Grade 14.
Okay, so 20, well, 2014, grade?
Grade three, let's just start.
So 2014, grade three, 67% of kids were proficient in mathematics, right? Okay, can you scroll back to the slide that you did with Christine?
You have to look at other data.
I'm going to show you, this, the question that, the question that I would ask, right, is, so you have this information, year to year, to year, to year, to year. What, what's happening in the school building? What's the action that's happening based on that data? So when I see that 67%, so it's all the way at the end, the ones where we see the question that was asked around that percentage. So what Raina explained, that Christine Rosner and at Owl, okay, take that information, and in the professional learning release days, or in whatever PD, they sit down, they look at that, and they say, how are we going to teach to this, based on that 40% of our kids are struggling, right? Like, so that's the question that I would ask, which we, I've been asking for three and a half years. But yes, right, like, that's the...
And I guess, like, that's what we do with that. So that is like...
One leads to the other, leads to the other, leads to deeper...
So we're going to, we're going to wind this down here. Especially if you're not on a microphone, but we're not having discussion, we're just asking questions and responding.
I broke the protocol.
Hello.
Hello. Catherine Pomeroy.
I know you are.
You say I should...
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, one of the, well, I'm excited about everything that's going on in grade three to eight. I think what Deb highlighted, and what I've seen looking at 2016, 2017, and looking at past data, is that we see the same themes over and over again, as you pointed out, on the secondary level. So one of the things you just said, Raina, was that we are using these scores to inform curriculum. How do you do that when you're looking at these scores in this late in the year, the budget's done? Like, wouldn't you have made a decision to maybe allocate two additional teachers in high school if you had looked at these numbers, as opposed to maybe another two in elementary? Just because I, you know, we see these scores, and they're the same year after year. I mean, when I look at environmental science, and I see 72% of our kids failing, I mean, it's like, it's crazy that we let that happen year after year after year. So, you know, I don't know, you know, back to what Erin was saying about how this affects our, our real estate, you know, U.S. News and World Report isn't looking at our grade three through eight. U.S. News and World Report is looking at how our SAT scores are and how our high school's doing. And the fact that we underspend on the high school, and under-focus on the high school, and the second, you know, and middle school, I mean, it hurts us in ways economically, you know, not just our students, but, you know, when we try to sell our homes, or, you know, our taxes continue to go up, but our scores don't go up commensurate to the tax raise. I mean, it's, it's just something that you have to look at, and you have to ask, and I have to ask the question, how could you possibly review these scores after the budget? Like, why aren't these, the one thing that the taxpayer pays taxes for is student performance. And so student performance should be factored into how the budget is spent. And we're reviewing this, and we didn't even review them at all last year. I mean, the last time we reviewed, and I have the, it was the 13th of December in 2016.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
I mean, how, how would we get away with that?
I think, I think what you're seeing is effort between, with the board and the administration to evolve what has been a relatively perfunctory presentation of the data that, so you're trying to see the connection. So we can't just chase an ephemeral national test. We have to figure out how we deal with it on a local basis, and that's what we're trying to get to. I, let me finish, please. And what I would say, I have a similar thought, that, you know, this, this test in particular has come previously in the fall, but we were just discussing this as well, that we have upcoming, what we call our end-of-year presentations. And similarly, I, you know, I would love to have that discussion about, do we need to rethink the timing of some of our presentations for when they come? Because some of the work that you're doing, where you share work about new initiatives, and sometimes that's happening in the fall, you're just getting going on that. So it would be interesting, for some of those, that they may be better presented later in the year. Conversely, hearing end-of-year, or this, at this point in the year, might be better timed in the fall. So I think that's a worthwhile discussion to have, absolutely.
And I would also like to add that I think, you know, throughout the presentation, while this presentation was being made to the public and to the board now, I think the many examples that Raina used was work that was done throughout the year. You know, she talked about, you know, things that happened over the summer. They use the data, even though it's being presented to us now, it doesn't mean that this is the first they're looking at it and analyzing it. So I hope that point came across.
Yeah, I, I'd love to say that that was true, but to the point of, we see the same AP scores in the same classes year after year after year. I mean, when I look at, you know, the last time I was up here speaking about these scores, and we look at economically disadvantaged students, you know, in the regions, the 10th grade regions, 55 proficiency in 2015, and 16, 75 proficiency in 2016, a 63% proficiency. How low do they have to go before we say, oh, my God, we need to do something? The second thing I wanted to say was, you noted in your presentation on, you tightened pacing in second grade to make sure that you had addressed the issues. I'm wondering if that might also be something, you know, we noted the AP, one of the challenges for New York State in AP is that we start a month later than most of the rest of the country. So maybe we should be tightening the pacing in AP, you know, because I just walked out of this room and saw a whole bunch of students leaving their APUSH review. Well, you know, three hours of cramming a couple of days before the test, we all know that doesn't work. We all tried it in college, we all know it didn't work, right? And every, every bit of evidence shows that, you know, you have to layer on the brain. The only way the brain remembers is that you keep layering it. So I just wonder if maybe one of the answers to the AP issues might be to do what you did in second grade, and that's tighten the pacing.
I mean, I don't know if, Mr. Cohn, if you would want to share any comments?
Actually, there is one part that I wanted to comment on, and that is some of the data that Catherine's quoting around the economically disadvantaged. And certainly, I'm able to see some of the same data that she has, but, you know, Raina had pointed out that we made a conscious decision to shift to a 10th grade test. There's a couple of factors that I looked a little bit deeper into, and I think when you look at the cohort data, that is, by the time that the kids graduate, you see a very different picture. So our cohort that graduated last year, actually, our economically disadvantaged students had a 90% success rate on the ELA regions. The year before, it was a 93% success rate, and in 15, 16, it was 75%. I'll also highlight that the number of students in the cohort of economically disadvantaged is fairly low in each graduating class, and there is a tremendous amount of corollary and overlap with students that are also students with IEPs. And many of those students can meet proficiency levels when they get... And many of those students can meet proficiency levels when they get a fifty-five on the regions. So, your data would show up low on one end, because they're not meeting the passing rate of sixty-five, but they're meeting their graduation rate standard. So, again, I think it's all an effective number, but I think when you look deeper at it, there's certainly more information and a deeper story to be gained. And the only other thing that I'll say, listen, US News and World Report is one measure. I mean, I think it was three or four years ago, we had an incredibly high rating. I don't want to misquote myself on it. We were like in the top, I don't know, anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five, I believe, in the state. And maybe I'm overstating it, and I apologize if I am. And while very proud, it's certainly only one piece of the puzzle. US News and World Report looks very specifically at certain types of data. In fact, Scarsdale's made decisions to not offer AP courses in their school. They don't really show up very favorably in that report. And, you know, again, I think that's just one factor in it. That being said, last year, US News and World Report used a different measure, and they've since corrected themselves, and went away from that measure this year. And while certainly some of the economically disadvantaged numbers that Catherine is alluding to impacted our ability to make it through what was a new-time, first-level of measure that they used last year, for whatever reason, and I'm not here to say that it was anything other than they just made a change, but they made a change. So, we're certainly seeing different standards coming out this year.
Hi, I'm Ruth Friedman. How many graduating seniors are going to Ivy League schools this year?
I didn't hear what you said.
How many, how many graduating seniors are going to Ivy League schools this year?
Couldn't give you the number off the top of our head.
Are there any?
Yes.
Absolutely, we have, every year.
A hand, like, five, ten?
Ivy doesn't give that, scholarships for athletics.
Just academics?
It sounds like you don't have the data before you...
And then, I would say that certainly, where we look to the Ivies, being amazing institutions of learning, students also do make decisions to pursue other pathways, too. So, there's some students that choose not to go that route, and recognizing that many of our students do aspire for such, we do have a number of students on an annual basis that do get accepted and attend Ivy League schools. But...
I'm sorry, can you just speak to the microphone, because it's recorded?
There was also a note in there that, on one of the sheets on the deck, that you're maybe doing away with Regents diplomas, because only SUNY's, it was, yes it was.
Advanced Regents.
Advanced Regents.
Because only SUNY schools accept them?
New York schools.
SUNY, New York, State University, right? It was on the top of one of the top, the first couple pages. Because I was a little flabbergasted that we're talking about economics, and that may be the only schools that some people can afford, so why would we do away with that? Keep going back. That, it said that you're considering doing away with it, the Regents diploma.
Advanced Regents.
Okay, I don't have the vernacular correct, but either way...
But they're two, right.
Do you want to give a brief explanation of it? I mean, I think you did, but...
Yeah. Well, that's why I wanted to show you, that's why I went to this other slide, because this slide actually shows the difference between the Regents and the advanced Regents. Somewhere. So, many of our neighboring school districts give what is the five mandated Regents. So, on the left side, you see the Regents diploma and the advanced Regents diploma. And so, the advanced Regents diploma requires us to offer more Regents courses. And we have seen, certainly with many of our neighboring districts, the success in giving the five, only the five, because what it does is it allows us to be more, I would say, creative, and as well as innovative in some of our other courses. Unfortunately, when our teachers are driven by a Regents curriculum, they are, they are literally driven by that, right? Here's, this is what they're doing all year long, leading to a test.
But that's what we do with core, that's what, that's what this has become. Core curriculum, they're leading every, every single week. You have exactly what the kid needs to do. If the teacher even does it, because, I mean, sometimes my kids' books are empty, half-empty. But, oh, I just had another question.
No, but I did have...
I think we're gonna end the community comment unless you have another question.
Was it a question or a comment, though? Because I didn't hear a question, I'm gonna answer.
No.
Just for the record, like, what was the, the question was, do we, are we doing away with the Regents? Did we answer yes or no?
Do we what?
Did we answer the question?
What's the question?
I don't know what the question was.
Are we doing away with the advanced Regents?
I think the question that I heard was, why would we do away with the advanced Regents distinction? And would it be hurting kids? And I guess the only answer that I had of is, keep in mind that the only time that students get a distinction of advanced Regents is when they receive their diploma during the summer after they've graduated. And by that time, they're well on their way to college.
So, it's not affecting their acceptance at a college?
No.
Got it, thank you. Okay, I think, I think we're gonna move on. And we appreciate the presentation and the continuing evolution of it. And I think we'll move now to, let me just make sure, I believe we moved, oh, did we skip district news?
You did. Well, you already shared one of the things that I was gonna reference, and I'll be, I'll be brief, but one of the things that I was going to reference was acknowledgement of our faculty for teacher appreciation. Certainly, we want to send our sincere thanks to all of our faculty and staff for all the hard work that they do each and every day to provide for the amazing experiences that our students enjoy. I wanted to give a reminder that tomorrow is the final day of our school district survey, I believe. We've hit those critical thresholds for our sampling. Thus far, we've had nearly fifteen hundred students, parents, teachers, community members have completed the survey, so we're looking to wrap that up tomorrow. Additionally, we certainly don't want to forget that, as we said before, May 21st is Election Day, that from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM on the 21st, in Main Street School Community, you'll have the opportunity to be able to come out and vote on not only the budget, as referenced in the capital project, but also to vote for candidates that are running for open seats on the Board of Education. Certainly want to draw all of our community members to the website to learn more about each of the projects, and to remind everybody that there is a PTSA-sponsored candidate forum on Monday evening. Additionally, and as Mr. Cohen's sitting in the room as well, as we discussed previously at the last meeting, we do have a number of administrative vacancies this year that we are in the process of seeking to fill, our high school principal, director of athletics, as well as director of athletics and director of technology. So, we're in the midst of all those processes. Earlier today, I sent out an email that went to the high school community related to opportunity, actually, the parent community, I'm sorry, an opportunity for next Tuesday evening, for an open forum to provide some feedback to help inform our search process in recruiting the next high school principal. And just a bit of an overview, that we do have a thorough hiring process in place here in the district, that Dr. Core and my colleagues do a fabulous job administering. You know, it starts with the traditional recruitment efforts, with advertisement, and traditional and informal approaches, through networking and professional organizations. There's layers of screening that occur of resumes, which then brings a number of individuals in for individual personal interviews, committee interviews that are comprised of representative groups of the community. When we think of administrative positions, such as principal or director, as well as district-level positions, the trustees always sit on that committee. Additionally, following that process, we have what is, we refer to as a clinical process. So, when you think of it in a teacher sense, the easiest comparison would be to think of a demonstration lesson that many of your children probably have participated in over the years. But we mimic those types of experiences for all levels of hiring in our schools with different types of performance tasks associated with that. And then, there's other small group interviews, and our administrative interviews always end with time with the Board of Education prior to appointment. So, when we look to these three positions out there, there's a tremendous process underway, where we are doing our darndest to recruit the very best candidates, and vet them the best we can to ensure that we find the best possible folks to be able to lead our departments and schools. So, that said, we look forward to being able to share more information as we progress through this, and encourage anyone interested to come out and share your thoughts on Tuesday night related to the high school principal vacancy.
And we have a document that outlines this, is that available?
It's posted on the Human Resource website, webpage.
So, if you go to the Human Resources webpage, it's available. Okay. Appreciate that. So, now we'll move on to our committee and liaison reports. And, you know, Buildings and Grounds took a lot of time up to this point in the year, but it's been a couple minutes since we heard from you, any updates?
Of course, it's the one time I don't have my notebook in front of me, Carol, and we had such a great meeting, so...
Oh, she sent a really great, I couldn't go at the last minute, and I felt like I was there.
I brought shared, I can give you enough shared services, but I don't have my B&amp;G. So, can we, can you put me on for next time? Unless Maria wants to grab it offline.
Um, I could grab it and give it to you.
Okay.
Man, Carol, you send a lot of emails.
Want to build these around?
Yeah, I have it right here.
It's basically an, not really the end of the year, but a wrap-up.
You want us to circle back to you in two minutes?
No, it's okay, I remember it, I was there.
Okay.
So, it was an effort by Carol and Gary to update the Buildings and Grounds Committee on work that's being done, aside from the bond work, which is what we've really focused on as a B&amp;G committee up until this point. So, namely, what they've worked on, and we were updated on, is Peaceville Playground at Dow's Lane. That's a project that the PTSA is going to fund, along with some class fundraising. They're gonna paint the area outside of the, you know, resurface and paint the area outside of Dow's Lane. And then, when we do the bond work in two years from now, it may get redone. The current Carol's gonna be, I think, but, but it sounded like this is...
It's a stencil, so it can be...
Stencil, already purchased, right? So, we're gonna use the stencil. Yeah, so it, and the labor's gonna be donated. So, it's a project that they really don't want to wait two years to begin, because obviously, the children like to be in the interest. So, that's gonna go forward. We also talked about that there was a proposal made by, I think it was David Sotile, to rename the middle school atrium after two long, the husband and wife? Because I'm looking at just the wife. Okay, husband and wife, Mary and...
John.
John, correct. And that's a done deal?
Yes, yep, we're just waiting on a plaque design that would be approved by the committee before we can officially name the space by resolution with the... If the family gave consent, so...
Yeah, which is very nice.
We just got that last week.
The bollards outside of the high school, they're gonna be relocated. We're not sure where, we're gonna contact the village, they had expressed interest. The reason being that when we go forward with the bond work, we're gonna have other bollards put in its place. Personally, I think it'll be more aesthetically pleasing, and they'll also serve the purpose for what the bollards there are. But that, that work should be able to move forward relatively quickly after the bond. Thank you. Main Street School fence, there was an ask by the neighbor who borders the property at Main Street School to replace the fence that exists on that green area right off the aqueduct. They were going to pay for the fence, it's on our school district property, so we just agreed on the type of fence, the color, and the height. So, I think they're gonna move forward with that as well. We talked about weed whackers and backpack blowers. We're happy to report that an electric backpack, as well as weed whacker, has been purchased and is being used. Children aren't here to hear it, but I know that they'll be thrilled. We talked a little bit about the expensive electric lawn mowers. They are still very expensive, we really want to wait till the price comes down to purchase one. I think that they're, they're useful for some of the lawn maintenance, but not necessarily some of the other heavier stuff. So, at the, for the time being, we're not recommending that we purchase one of those. And I don't think the village has either, right? Yeah, so we were talking about what, where the village is. We talked a little bit about the tiny house that is outside of the high school, and relocating it for educational purposes down to Dow's Lane, maybe in the fall. We start using that, so that kids can learn and understand what went on in that funding and that project. What else?
And memorial... And the memorial box, there's a little...
The other thing is...
Gotta have a touch, do you have a touch?
There's this. Nobody's got the...
Oh, yeah, and that was helpful, that was also pointed out, that in and around the high school, there's some memorial boxes by some trees, and we want to make sure that during the work for the bond, that we're gonna...
Some of them might be disrupted.
Yeah, so maybe, so we're gonna take an inventory, Gary's gonna do that for us, and then we'll have to reach out to the families to relocate those memorials and make sure we preserve the tree.
Actually, throughout the whole campus, so...
Whole campus, yes, I think there's quite a few things. Anyway, those are just some of the fun highlights that we talked about at Buildings and Grounds.
Can I, can I make a suggestion really quickly? Can someone, please, I don't care who it is, take a video of whoever using it, the electric thing, thingy?
So, actually, that's...
And send those kids, or pull those kids out of class, and like, because they should know.
So, we have, but you know, you wanna know what's interesting, Dave? We actually are doing that, because that's been my thought. It's very difficult to tell. It's not that, not that much less noisy. And it's really hard to know.
But it accomplishes their...
I actually went to yell, yell at Kyle, because I thought he was using the gas one still, and he was using the electric.
But no fumes.
But no fumes.
Very, it's a learning moment.
From a distance, you can't really tell it, but once you get close, you can. But it's still pretty noisy, so, they're coming, they're getting better every year, but... It's a work in progress, I'll put it that way.
You should know that they made an impact.
The last thing, Michael, is as part of B&amp;G, kind of in the shared services meeting that we held on April 29th with the village. So, we had two village representatives, board trustee member, and Larry Shaw, and the chairman, Carol, Gary, and myself, met to talk about shared service opportunities, storage, equipment, snow plowing, we went over a list with Chris, of course, talking about what we do, what we share, what other opportunities. One interesting item that came up is emergency power generators, talking about maybe the village purchases one, which they're looking into, it's trailer-mounted, that the district could have use of that. Talking about grants, talked about locations of warehouse storage. There's an opportunity for us to both look into particular property here in the village. And in order to really make sure that we come together and meet again, we have another meeting scheduled on June 11th. So, we outlined some of the common areas of interest, and we're gonna continue that conversation.
Thank you.
Curriculum Committee, met the 26th of April.
Skip communications.
All right, we're going down the table.
Go ahead.
It was very simple, anyway. We talked about data. That's what we talked about. And I believe you see a lot of, sort of, a lot of what came out at the back end of that presentation was, as a result of a lot of the conversation that we had during the, so I'm not gonna beat the dead horse. That's where we were at, right?
What's the, so, the most recent communications committee meeting was April 26th, I believe. If anyone needs to correct me, please do. In addition to talking about bond and budget communications, generally, I think we also checked in on the survey, and we're looking at whether or not we had the statistically significant cutoffs. And so, that was really, really kind of discussing the strategy for making sure that the survey would be sufficiently broad to be relevant to everybody.
And it is?
I believe it is now.
Yeah, we hit the threshold for parents, and students was the easy one. We hit the threshold for parents the end of last week, and we have like two or three more teachers, and we hit it. K-12 Insights, you know, it's helped us a little bit. They've been pushing out emails to those that haven't completed it yet. So, they sent another e-blast to all the folks that haven't completed it yet again today. And I also want to add that we, something, as an additional step this year, we took paper copies of the survey down to the senior center and gave them envelopes, and if interested, that they could have them dropped up in a sealed envelope, that would be returned for K-12 Insights processing.
For any returned?
I don't know as yet, I think Joan was gonna collect them and bring them up, but I gave her a big stack of them a week ago with the envelopes for sealing.
Excellent.
Yeah, so... Just want to add one last piece of the data, a piece that I forgot to mention. Just wanted to add one last piece of the data, a piece that I forgot to mention. I apologize. You know, as part of the overall conversation around data, there was a really good sort of, you know, is data really that important? And what kinds of data? And so we really dug into the data. And I think something that I had shared with the colleagues of the board, I wanted to share also with the administration is that, yes, you know, it's a great question to, you know, to ask and to talk about. I think one of the things we want to try to remember is that data is an important aspect, but it's not, it shouldn't be a dominant driver, right? And so like in our continued quest for understanding and sort of how we're going to use data moving forward, I think it's important to remember that. That it's a key driver, but it doesn't have to be a dominant driver.
Okay. Did policy meet at the period?
No.
No? I can't read down the lines.
Four, five, or was it?
A month ago.
Yeah. Yeah, we met on the fifth. So we're doing a first read today.
Are we? Yep.
Any updates from our liaison committees?
The PTSA met at the general membership meeting on April 23rd and voted to support the bond and the budget, which was great news. They also want to report that the luncheon was very successful. They will report out later on how much money they raised, which has no funds many of their grants. The safety committee met on April 24th, and Maury was there as well. And Carol chairs those meetings. They're multidisciplinary meetings. We talked about building level teams and their safety work with respect to their preparedness to what's called annexes. And we also looked at accident reports as we do regularly. Oh, yes, the PTSA also would like to explain that this week they're taking care of a lot of teacher appreciation, events by running luncheons, and recognition by class parents. And then on behalf of the board, I attended the Equity Summit at Columbia University last week. It was very fascinating, and I hope to share the materials that were provided with the board and the public once that they're posted by New York School Boards Association. There were many representatives from BOSI's, assistant superintendents from communities all over the state. And the focus was on how you create equity for students, an opportunity for every student in your district. And the breakout sessions included everything from trauma-informed practices with students to recruitment practices for staff, to a really fascinating presentation on professional development using BOSI's open source software. So I really look forward to sharing that information with everyone once they post it.
I guess there's been two community advisory board meetings this morning being one of them. There's very nicely this year, there's a huge turnout with students this year representing all of the grades, including the middle school. So that room is quite filled with many, many students. Not so many adults this morning, but a lot of kids. So they kind of, over the past month, they've had Stephen Dewey, Mikey Fallon, and at the last cab meeting, they had two young men who were from Irvington-Dobbs Ferry. There was a young guy who committed suicide a number of years ago. And these are some of his friends. They've formed this foundation. And basically, they want to go around sharing their stories with kids, and it's about mental health. And they get, were you there last time? So it was an interesting presentation. I was watching the adults' reactions and the students' reaction. And today, the chairpeople asked the students what they thought of this presentation because the adults kind of felt like they needed to refine their presentation. And hearing some feedback from some of the kids, specifically girls, because girls like to talk more than boys do. They got some really, I thought, some really interesting feedback from the kids that the kids didn't look at the same way that the adults did, the presentation, that it's something that they're all, that if they're not struggling with it, they have friends who are struggling with mental health in different ways, whether it's anxiety, whether it's, you know, it could run the gamut. And how the kids very much would like to see that brought to the schools for everyone. So the two chairs are going to go back to the young kids and maybe give them some feedback and maybe invite them back next year. Maybe they could refine their presentation and then bring it to the high school. Because it seemed to have really resonated with the kids. They really felt it was authentic and real and extremely relevant right now to what they're dealing with in their lives. So I thought that was so interesting when the kids are, you know, so honest and they're articulate and they, you know, they're just honest. And so it was great. So these are some speakers that the, that IS had brought in. And the kids also gave some really nice feedback on these speakers as well. And then they're looking for kids to attend this summer for the U2 summit that they are sending kids to. So there's a couple of kids that are going, but they would love to send as many as wants to go. So. And then they also talked about something that they're planning called a Destress Fest at the high school that they're working on. So, but they didn't really share any materials, any ideas yet. They're working on it. And there will be a June meeting. The kids want a June meeting. They surveyed the room and they said they want the meeting, so.
Meeting often falls off.
Yes, it does. This is a very involved group. It's nice.
Excellent. Okay.
Oh, actually wellness.
Wellness?
Yes. Should we do wellness? Feel free to jump in because there is one thing that I do want to bring to the board's attention. So Alyssa Bigley joined. She's the consultant from the firm that we had hired to put together the RFP for us.
For the food service?
For the food service. So they come in periodically and audit the cafeteria and surprise Dave from Aramark. And he says he's so happy.
All the time anyway.
What?
I do that too, but they're better at it.
Yeah, yeah. So she, you know, she identified some of the big changes this year. More proteins being offered, no artificial dyes, being compliant with the smart snack regulations, and just, you know, the improvements that were put into the contract in terms of quality and service. And she, you know, I've been in that room in years past where we haven't done so well. And she sung our praises and said, you know, she would find little things, but it looks like everything's going well this year. We also discussed an interactive menu that will be released in the fall. And there was conversation that it's going to be, the committee will be able to poke around and give some feedback on the interactive menu. It's not only going to offer allergy information, but it's going to, soup to nuts, basically telling you what's in the foods exactly. And so the one thing that's changed this year is that Dow's Lane, they are doing what's called a plated, a full serve. So the kids are given, they're given choices, but they have all five components on their tray. And the observation has been that there are certain items, like the milk, going to waste. They're walking out of the line and they're throwing it away. So with the Dow's Lane principle, they've come up with some, with an idea that they're hoping to see that the kids not throw it away. They're going to come out with like a milk cart idea, not plate it, and then go around and offer it to everybody, quite honestly. That way we're not wasting it, and maybe it'll get some other people to drink milk.
There was also, I think, in that, the ability to kind of move the line ahead.
Right.
Because there's one less thing that kids have to take, and it's also hard for the smallest kids to navigate the trays with this added heavy thing on them. So.
Right. And with the added time that they can also offer more choices of the fruits because sometimes the server was just saying, here, making sure they got the milk, wasn't giving the choice of the fruit. But there's usually two or three choices for fruit. So the idea is to try to get the kids to eat at least one of them. So maybe if they take their favorite one, they won't be throwing it out. So that was the other option. And so I think this would be a kind of a fun way to promote the milk and not waste it.
Right. And then the only other thing, which is what I really wanted to also bring to your attention, is that there is a discussion that the Dow's Lane is going towards a no-salt-sugar way of celebrating birthdays. So doing away with cupcakes and those kinds of treats to celebrate one's birthday. And I just, at the meeting, I had questioned whether, you know, this was, you know, what the school, the community wanted, or, you know, was it to be compliant with something? Because I know many years ago, it was a, but I think the times have changed, but it became a thing that I know escalated all the way to the board level. And parents were very unhappy with that. But it sounds like we won't have that problem now, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that that is the direction that they're heading.
I just throw in, I was unable to attend that meeting, but when we think about moving forward and the district's commitment to having a sustainability committee, I begin to wonder about the synergies with wellness and sustainability. And if there's a way of converging those particular committees, because there's obvious linkage among those different types of initiatives.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like some of the ideas that the building principals that they were just mentioning, Main Street, instead of, instead of birthday treats, they get 10 extra minutes outside at recess. Was that what that was for? Or was that with something else?
I'm not totally sure, but that's one of the ideas, I think.
Yeah, I think that's something that they offer at the Main Street or. So.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I believe we're ready to move on to our policy first read, which is quite a list here. How do we want to approach?
Certainly, we defer to the committee. It's, you know, I don't know if the committee wants to give an overview of process and some of the feedback that's been received on these policies for public. We want to say that these policies were provided well in advance for the board to be able to review. They were posted on, I think, the March 5th agenda publicly as well. So the board will have an official first reading, hearing this evening, and then seek to adopt them in the beginning of June.
So, yeah, I don't know how you want to proceed, Michael. I mean, we could identify one by one. I mean, it's 15 at night, but we could identify one by one each of the policies, being on policy committee. I mean, I'm happy to read them out loud and then ask, does anybody have any questions? Or.
Why don't we just see if anyone has any questions, go from there?
Does that work for you, Deb?
Yeah. Because maybe, you know, maybe they're not done any questions?
Well, because I have some comments.
I would say that maybe to simplify, there were some, I know some edits or typos that were caught by trustees that were forwarded to Deb. And then, so those areas will be passed along to administration and we'll have some of those adjustments made. And then, Deb, there are, I think, a couple of items that were deeper, more policy belief.
Policy, I don't have those comments, but that's why I would look at each of the individual messages. Do you want to go through them?
Yeah, I mean, I could just go through them with you based on what's, I mean, I'm working off of the policies that were provided to us in March.
Right, right.
So, you know, the first policy.
Sorry, could you just bring it a little closer? I can't, I'm having trouble.
Sorry, I'm working off the policies that were provided to us in March, because I was expecting a first reading at that time. So I just had some questions I think could be answered. I know that aside from you and Maury sitting on the policy committee, that also lead administrators do. I had the enjoyable opportunity to sit in on one of those. And I just think it's very important. I mean, I've discussed this, that policies can't just merely be aspirational. They need to track practice. Or at least, practice should be trying to get to the point of the policy. So in terms of like, for example, policy 4200, I just wanted a chance to talk a little bit about whether when we talk about curriculum being made available to parents, we're now at a point where we have more, more, how do we say it, more progress made on Rubicon Atlas. I think the last time I looked, there was. I think that that was a way that that was intended to work. I wanted to know, Reina, so there's been more population, I think, of the.
You know, people continue to populate, but Beth, I think it's a really good point. I want to say probably mid-year, we talked about making sure that things were public. And I want to say, Beth, it was you maybe that who indicated to me that one of the, maybe health wasn't public, you know?
And then it was, and then more pieces were added, although not so much on the, I think not so much on the high school level. Maybe at the middle school level, it was finally populated, I think, in February.
Right.
Again, the curriculum, the Rubicon Atlas holds curriculum units for different classes.
Yeah, thanks, Ray.
I have one question about this real quick, Beth.
Yeah.
So the very, no, I just want to look at the very first line on this paper.
I'm sorry, did you have a question that?
Yes, so the question was, it seems like more progress has been made. That's what I was saying. So that when we say curriculum shall be made available to parents and community members to promote understanding of district goals and objectives, I think that that is the main mechanism we're using. And I just want to clarify that as we move forward to approving the policy.
I would say that that's one way, open house. When you go to open house and you can go in and out of each classroom, and your teachers give you an overview of the year.
Good point.
That's another way. I would say at the elementary level, through your parent-teacher conferences, and then ultimately, any, at middle school, I would say, and high school, scheduled meetings, because obviously it doesn't happen quite the same way. So I would say that's the variety. So yes, Rubicon Atlas is our main vehicle, as well as to me, open house. Those would be the two main. But I can also go back, now that you're saying that, Beth, I'm going to go back and see where we are. The way that it works with Rubicon Atlas, just so you know, is there's like a little box. And when a teacher has developed that, gotten that unit, we click that box on so that that curriculum is available to families. So it's probably a good time for me at this point to go back and see where we are on anything that's not public at this point.
Right. And thank you.
Pretty much everything should be public.
And then there was some intersection of that policy with policy 4315.1. I do need to ask Deb though, because.
Okay, let's, is that in on 4200?
That was it from 42. We should ask everyone else.
Hey.
Sorry. I'm hogging my.
I had a 4200.
Yes, you say so. I know you did.
I just want to note that the very first line says, "The adoption of the district's curriculum is one of the BOE's most important responsibilities." I'm just going to recommend that we take a deeper peep at this at another time, let's not 10:30 at night, considering it's one of the most important things we do. Not just flash in the pan. And I know, you know, listen, we are where we are for a lot of reasons, but the point is, is this is a really important conversation, in my opinion. And to just kind of like fetch out about it now is counterproductive.
Well, I think the thing to remember is that what we did on policy is look at the policy that was recommended, whether it was required or recommended. Then we went through it in committee to make sure that it was consistent with our current policy or we added where necessary. And now as a board, we'll adopt it. But to your point, to follow it, understand it, and work with it is the work of the board going forward. So tonight is only to say, yes, we agree. This is the, it is our job. It's one of our most important responsibilities. And this language is consistent with that responsibility. So we can adopt the policy, but working with it and understanding is the work of this board. And then that's why we take the time to look at this.
But we're not adopting it now.
We're not adopting it.
No, it was first read.
We will, but we will be moving towards adopting it.
But supporting that statement is part of the first read.
And Deb, can you just quickly go over required local and action?
I mean, noticed, notice.
I would actually defer to Chris on that because he explained it to me.
So the idea of something local is the idea of you're expressing the board's local belief and commitment to something. It's to put employees, community members on notice, so to speak, of what your beliefs are, what your rules are related to a particular area. Required is that it's specifically stated in regulation or law that you need to have a policy on that. Local notice may reference laws and regulations, but it's not required by regulation to have it. Something that is notice, it's just essentially a public statement about something that, I'm trying to think of an example of something that we would have that's just notice.
Well, the HIV policy.
Yeah.
HIV.
Right.
Which, you know, I just didn't know because I wasn't aware that that was requirement in K through 12 instruction. And I'm new to the board. And I wasn't aware about the advisory council. And I wasn't sure how to read this policy, because when I reference the statutes that are mentioned by it, it looks like it's a requirement. And I'm trying to understand before voting, what are the requirements for this district on the matters that are reflected in that policy.
Yeah.
Right, because that was also my confusion. I printed out the one that was adopted back in 2006. Because it was clicked as notice, but yet in the policy, I mean, when it goes, you know, it seems like a parent can opt out. But if you opt out of being in school during the instruction, you have to, you still have to, the parents have to promise that they are still providing that instruction at home. are still providing that instruction at home. So to me, that reads as if it's a requirement, it's based on a regulation, that we need to have this policy. So that confused me because it's clicked as notice.
As notice. So I think the reason for the notice is that you're providing that response, that notice of parental responsibility, that they have to provide such education at home, as stated. So, you know, I think one of the things that when you go through policy and exercise, so not only is it an effort to update, you know, our own practices, but it's always one of those checks and balances. And I can tell you, there's a piece where that's an overwhelming process as well, because when you go through and say, well, regulation is saying that we have to have an advisory council on this, it means that we have to go step back and form an advisory council on this, and then determine what the responsibilities of that may be. So, you know, there's work that's going to come out of this, just from enacting, adopting a policy.
I got it.
Compliance pieces that we've encountered.
Thanks for explaining that.
This isn't the only item that we'll see through this process, where there's going to be a to-do list that grows out of it.
Okay. That's it.
That's what was confusing to me.
And then, there's a policy which is local. I'm just asking, I sat in for Brian on an I, a while ago, when I was there with him. And we have this policy, which I think is a good one, which says, district-owned instruments may be loaned. But I was just wondering if we could find out more about whether we actually do that in the budget? And is that something we do?
Yeah, this policy actually was sent to the music department to make sure that it was alive and well, so to speak. There were actually a couple edits that may have been lost in the process here. But, and you can see, we, I know, one of the things that Deb pointed out to me earlier today, there's some edits related to having some consistency between district-owned and school-owned. Should all be district-owned, I believe, the reference there. But what is written on paper here is consistent with what practices in our music department.
And I could tell you firsthand, I do know that the music department owns instruments and does loan them. Bass is an example, because the bass is expensive to rent. But the, most of the students that I'm familiar with will rent their own bass, but you are told that there is a school bass, to the extent you can use in practice. You can't necessarily always take it home, but you are given the opportunity to use and rehearse at school.
Right, it'd come up in the context of MSS as well, Main Street School, that the music department there would prefer to have examples of every kind of instrument available for the children, to have that opportunity to try something out that perhaps they haven't been assigned to. And it just was interesting, because the parents who were at I E F that night just didn't know that there was such a policy, and I wasn't aware. So I'm really glad to see that reflected. And the only other piece, you know, which I just think is important to mention in light of all the technology talk we've been doing, is if we look at policy 4321.6, where we talk about alternative format instructional materials, it talks about providing any medium other than a traditional print textbook. But in talking about putting in Amplify, we've discussed the fact that that kind of traditional printed matter is going to become the alternative moving forward for that sort of curriculum delivery. Nonetheless, I think because of public discussions on the board, this probably adequately reflects the practice of the board. So I wanted to bring those matters.
That was 4321.6, Beth?
Yeah, .6.
And I just want to note specifically that that policy, because I don't know if you read the full title, relates for students with disabilities.
Correct. But we had had conversations here, you know, Raina was very helpful on this, that of course, if there's a child even without disabilities who prefers to work on paper, that will be permitted. So I just wanted to bring out those comments, because the policies are active and it's important for the board to be able to respond to them and be able to refer to them in working with constituents and stakeholders. So, thank you.
And Chris, the only thing that I saw that there's in these policies, for example, 4321.4, which is independent educational evaluations, we do refer in a couple of these policies to our, the district's special education plan, and how, for example, for independent educational evaluations, that the board directs the superintendent to establish and include within the special education plan maximum allowable fees for specific valuations and a few other things. I think that special education plan, can you just tell us briefly, that's due to be updated?
Yep, it should be updated.
Is it the year that that?
I have to double-check with Gail, but I believe it's either this spring or next.
Okay.
I have to check with Gail.
Is that planned on the website? Because I think that's another thing that these policies seem to suggest, is that the community is supposed to have access to the special education plan. And I'm not sure it's on the website.
Is it slow? Wait, that's .5?
Pardon?
.5 or .4?
The one I just referred to is .4.
Okay.
It's also referenced in an earlier policy, in that it has to be available. It's also referenced in 4321.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
Next up, we have our consent agenda, and includes announcement of inspectors for our budget vote, capital bond proposition, and member election on May 21st, adoption of the 2019-20 calendar, various personnel matters, and can I get a motion to, Beth, do we want to wait for Dave, or are we just going to move along here?
Move along.
Move along.
Our business matters.
Oh, yes, consent agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so the way it works is, if you want to, if you want to pull in, no, two things. If you want to pull it out, we'll pull it out and talk about separately, or we can approve the consent agenda and ask questions. Dave, same thing. We're doing our consent agenda, and if there are items to be, that you'd like pulled, we can discuss those separately. Otherwise, we just do the consent agenda and talk about it at that point. So we have, oh, yes, including in our personnel matters, our tenure appointments for this year, as well as some contracts, some grants, and again, also the 2019-20 calendar. All right.
I'd like to pull out the calendar.
Okay. So we'll pull out the calendar and that agenda. And so in this case, would the, is that, is there any, any?
We haven't got a motion.
Motion, motion to pull it from that?
I would ask for a motion to modify the consent agenda, to remove that, that we'll have to stand on it.
But any one person can do that, no?
Go with your direction, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll pull it.
Calling the calendars and we pulled outside of the consent?
Okay.
11.2.
So any, any questions or statements before we call a motion to vote on the calendar?
Want to go back to the four days, the three days at the end of the year?
So that's not on this?
Are we talking about it, or no?
Well, I mean, we talked about it, so we're now...
New information that I got today. I just found out that, you know, that I didn't realize that the middle school pulled out, kids all get dismissed by 12 o'clock, the entire, like, week of June whatever, June whatever, the finals and stuff. So now you're talking about, you got kids leaving the building, you got kids being pulled out of school for over a week and change. I just thought it was worth talking about, you know, because we, it didn't, that was a detail that escaped us in the formal piece. So, you guys are looking at me quizzically.
Yeah, if I may, I thought we discussed it in speaking of secondary schools as an exam period, and I think it's probably noted in documents that were shared with the board.
I just thought it required more conversation before we did the formal motion.
That's been ongoing practice.
It's been longstanding, yeah. We have fall-on exams scheduled, and it's actually middle, no, I'm just saying, I just want to say, built into the New York State, the new calendar regulations are the allowance for that and conditions that fall around middle school schedule.
I totally understand.
Sharing that.
Yeah, because those half-days that we were speaking about were really about the elementary level.
To P, they're not half-days for everybody?
What?
So those, the last days on that calendar, the four days originally, now it's three, right? Those three days are half-days, those are just for the elementary school? Is everybody else on a testing schedule?
Everybody else in the exam period.
Yeah, the secondary level is on a whole nother schedule, yes.
I needed that clarification. That's why I wanted to pull it out, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yeah. Could I get a motion to approve, was it item 11.2?
Two.
Two?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Stain?
Stain.
One abstain, six ayes. Okay.
All right, so could I get a motion to accept the remaining consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are there any questions related to the consent agenda, discussion?
I just have one. Carol, I was hoping I could ask you a question, only because I guess I haven't really understood. Under the business matters for consent agenda, I've reviewed the contracts in the past on how the board contracts with the public school district of where that's located, where the private school is located that our Irvington kids are going to attend school at. I had not really fully absorbed, and I just wanted to see if you could give me a little clarification. That's, for example, for the 37 Irvington kids who attend Hackley, for example, that Irvington's paying Tarrytown $1,000 per child for health services. And so for the nine Transfiguration students, we're paying $1,000 per child, again, to Tarrytown for health services. What is Tarrytown doing and providing?
Okay, so each school district provides nursing services to the private schools in their region. For example, we provide a nurse for John Carter O'Connor School.
Right.
We bill all of the students that go, that 80-something students that go to John Carter, we bill all those districts.
$1,000.
Our version of $1,000. It's around there.
But I've seen our...
It's what we pay, and then she's...
I understand that, but I've seen our nurse go down to there. I'm just wondering, so is Tarrytown?
The nurse, that's...
We have a nurse there, .8, yeah. She's there most of the day.
Yeah, sorry, we have a point. But, so at Hackley itself, Tarrytown is providing...
Pays for a nurse at Hackley.
Is paying for one nurse.
Right, so they also have...
So we've got, just our own kids at Hackley, we've got 37. So Irvington's giving Tarrytown $37,000 towards that one nurse. Okay.
But it's not just one nurse, Deb, it's more than that. Okay, so you can, you can count in administrative cost, you can count in a physician, you can count in speech therapists, you can count a bunch of things. And every school district pretty much follows the same formula of billing. It, to me, it's, I won't editorialize, I think it should just be something that state, you get state aid for, you just apply it, because this is what we're doing is kind of crazy. And the amount of work it takes is ridiculous.
No, I never really appreciate it. But the other thing that I just...
But each school district sends us a sheet, and I'll look through that to make sure what they're billing for us is allowable before we sign off, and then I even give that to you. So, like, for example, there's a school that might try to throw something in there that would be specifically only for special ed kids, and I would tell, I would tell them they have to take that off, or I won't pay that bill. So, because...
But I'm trying to understand that, is that I know that Hackley, for example, employs their own nurse. They have nurses, that those, these are tuition-paying parents.
But then they're getting reimbursed by Tarrytown for that nurse. So...
How many nurses do they have? Every single child that sends a child to, in Tarrytown, every school district, every single district is paying $1,000 per kid to Tarrytown.
Right, so because public schools are required to have, to pay for the nursing services, just like we're required to pay for textbooks and we're required to transport, we're also required to provide nursing services, plus speech screening, eye screening, similar things that you would have in a public school, you must provide in the private school, at all those private schools.
Now, I hear you. It is a state requirement that I think is...
And it used to see a larger number, but we, I started doing it per student, just because it was easier for you to see that, and also in case there's an extra student that we get billed for, you're required to approve it per student. And it's a crazy requirement of what we must enter into these contracts with each other, even though the law says we have to do it. So we bothered you with this, but yet we have to do it. I screen them all, I look at them all, we bill our own $1,000, whatever the number is, off the top of my head, I don't know it, but we do the same thing. And the hard part is when you have students that go in, that are in New York City, you have a much harder time getting the money, Dave, than anywhere else.
Dave.
Well, thank you for explaining that, because it's, it's a lot of money when you look at White Plains, Greenberg, you know, Six at Solomon Schechter, every single child we're paying $1,000 ahead.
So, I mean, ideally, the best thing is to try to keep our kids in our district, but...
And additionally, I mean, that's something I mentioned a couple meetings back, is, you know, the legislative session is still going, and there's this, what's called the big ugly. So pay attention to those alerts from NISBA in the New York State School Board Association in June, because they'll often say, oh, this thing or that thing is going to be passed, and it's often an item like that.
I know. Because at the end of the day, if you're going to send your child to a private school, you're paying tuition. You, I'm sure most of these parents assume that part of that tuition covers the nurse. You know, I'm sure most of our parents who send their children to private schools do not think their school district is paying $1,000 per head to cover that nurse. And that's a lot of money. Thank you.
And I just, if I could add to Michael's point, that Maura, Beth, and I, next week, are actually going to meet with the Senate Majority Leader, where they, West Putt, school boards is organizing. It's going to be a very brief meeting, so that's why I thought it was important that we get our names on that enrollment list. It's literally like a 20, 30-minute meeting. And so to come prepared with those priority items, so the three of us will be there, and I think next Wednesday afternoon for this quick little meeting at her office in Yonkers.
Thank you.
I wonder if it's the same office as the last time. Oh, I'm sure it is. Do you think so?
I'll give her nicer space.
Yeah, I do. Can I get them, so all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Against?
All right.
So, just jumping ahead to...
You could just maybe, well, I know that we have tenure appointments that were there, just acknowledge.
Yeah, so I wanted to congratulate a number of teachers who have just been approved for tenure, which include Michelle Barnetton at Dows Lane in elementary tenure area, Michael Berkowitz at the Irvington High School in special education, Kimberly Damon at Dows Lane for elementary, Lauren Holland at Main Street School for elementary, Nicole Katka at Dows Lane for reading remedial, Gina Menendez, the people personnel services at our school, our district social worker, Marcus Oats, the Irvington Middle School for technology, Stephanie Schilling at the Irvington High School for science, and Dows Lane, Leanne Wenig for special education. Can we just give them a hand? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then I'll jump ahead to thank the donation to the Zachary Kamen Scholarship Fund, and I believe, the PTSD for grant related to MSS parents as reading partners pizza pasta night. And also to note that there's, you know, this month's treasurer report available online with this agenda. With that, do we have, there's an opportunity for a community comment, going once, going twice. All right, our next meeting is Tuesday, May 14th, at 7:30 here in the campus presentation room. Can I get a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of talking about the employment history of particular persons?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll take a five-minute break?
Great.
Thank you.